Good evening and welcome to the August 2015 zoning board of appeals meeting. This is a meeting that's been rescheduled from the week before because we couldn't make that meeting, so thank you for all showing up. Karen, if you could call a roll, please.
Mr. Hebert?
Present.
Mr. Maroon? Mr. Loizel?
Here.
Mr. Crockett?
Here.
Mr. Stark? And Mr. Richard?
Here.
As you can see, I am not the, I'm not Mark Maroon, so I'm stepping in as zoning board chairman for the evening, and he can gladly have the position back when he comes back during our next meeting. But we have done this enough that we should be able to get through it, and I will guarantee you there won't be any mistakes, but we'll get through it, so. You'd start with the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice or all.
With the number of members that we have, everybody that you see here will be a voting member this evening. Some of us would not normally be voting, but we will all be voting. Another thing I should tell you upfront as part of our laundry list, there are only four members this evening, so what that means is typically you have to have a majority, and with four people, if two vote yes, two vote no, you don't have a majority. So that means a tie is a loss. So as we go through it, you'll get a feel for the direction that we're going, and we'll offer up if you are worried that it would fail and you don't want it to fail, because then it would be, you can't come back for another year. Then we'll put that out to you, and you can make that decision if you want to table at that point until we have a larger majority, one that has at least three additional yeses or an additional yes to make it three to two. So I'll put that out to you folks before we make that final vote. Let's start by looking at the meetings, meeting minutes. Everybody have a chance to look at that, and if you want to accept them, I'd like to have a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? So be it. So we have three cases this evening. The first appeal is appeal number 2553, limited yard reduction size. It's M. Jane Davis, 66 Mitchell Road, access, accessories map R2, parcel seven. So if you could come up, step up to the podium, tell us who you are, your address, and give us a brief explanation of why you're here.
Good evening. I'm Jane John, Jane Davis, 66 Mitchell Hill Road in Scarborough. And I'm here requesting a limited reduction of yard size variance to reduce the required front 50-foot setback from the front to 42 feet, so I can build a 14-by-16 addition on the backside of my house. Do I keep speaking?
You certainly can if you have more to say. If that's it, then...
Well, most of the information is in your packages, but I also took a couple of eight-by-tens just to show the, to show the side. I can pass this to you if you want, if I can approach, or am I not supposed to?
I think I can see if there can be... I think we can see it here, that's great.
So this is Twilight Drive, which is a private road off Mitchell Hill Road, and this is the corner of my house, and this is my fence. So this is all kind of wooded and brush. The addition would go off the backside of the house. Here's the backside of the house. So this is where the fence is over here in Twilight Drive. So where the proposed addition plan is to move the deck over to the end of the house and build the addition, keep this window, and build a 14-by-16 addition out this way. And because of the 50-foot setback from the survey line, I would need relief of about eight feet for the addition to be positioned correctly.
Yeah, and it's inside the existing envelope. If you look at that left edge from that photo, it's inside of that.
Yes.
I'll open it up to the board. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Alan, what do you think? Can you have any input on this? You'd like to...
Sure. As Jane pointed out, she's got kind of a unique situation there with Twilight Drive and Mitchell Hill Road creating two frontages on her property. I believe the house was probably constructed before Twilight Drive ever was there, and so it existed on its lot, and then at some point somebody put Twilight Drive in as a private road. And now it kind of pins her in for any expansion because of that requirement for another 50-foot setback on that side.
Okay.
So she's pointed out she wants to put an addition on the back of her house, and there's still road frontage on the back of her house. So it's a little bit unique in that regard. And I think part of the reason for the location, if you look, is if she were to slide the, if you want to look at the big screen here that I've got up, the addition that she's planning is fairly modest, and if she were to slide it down so that it was compliant within the envelope, she'd have a patio door, a sliding patio door in her bedroom, which, you know, it works better, obviously, to slide the deck down there, have the patio door. So I think, I think the, if you look at the criteria under the limited reduction of yard size, you can see that due to the physical features of the lot and/or location of existing structures, that kind of makes sense. So I think her request, in that regard at least, is very reasonable. Again, it's a very modest addition, and it certainly meets the criteria as far as the age of the structure to be eligible for a limited reduction of yard size if the board finds that all the other criteria are met.
Right. And the building was, I think, 1928, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you're asking for an eight-foot variance from...
Yes. Per the plans, it's 5.9, but we want a little bit of room so that we're completely compliant.
Okay. And I think that was roof overhang that took it to eight?
Yes.
And the carp, and the contractor isn't very accurate. Just kidding. Thought I had to throw that in there.
Good shot.
He needs a three-foot buffer.
Good shot, yeah, just to be close.
He does carpentry work like I do.
That's my drawing, guys.
I had to poke a little fun at Darryl.
You're applying for the permit.
You're in trouble. So it seems like a pretty straightforward appeal to me. Again, and any other comments or questions from the board? Are there any letters written? Any letters to read?
There was not.
Okay. So nothing from the abutters. While the board thinks about it, I'll open the meeting up to the public. If anybody would like to speak to this, now would be your time. Seeing no interest, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, go back to the board, the questions or comments. Again, this, to me, is a very straightforward appeal.
Can we just go down to the guidelines?
We certainly will. If you want to go to that, we will. The questions that need to be answered, and I'll need the applicant to address these. For the record, this is, again, being a limited reduction of yard size, the questions are one through five. Is that correct? And first one being, the existing building or structure of the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size is requested were erected prior to July 3, 1991.
The existing building was erected prior to July 3, 1991, as evidenced by a tax record of 122887, and I attached the tax record labeled Exhibit C1.
Correct, and I believe the finding of fact that would be, it was 1928.
Yeah.
Requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties utilized in the zoning district.
Yes.
Due to the physical features of the lot and/or the location of the existing structure on the lot, it would not be practical to construct a proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements.
Yes, as this would increase the project cost by not being able to salvage and move the existing deck and maximizing the cost-bill deficiencies, as well as it would disrupt the existing floor plan of the home by having, well, the deck going way off, plus I was a little worried about the front setback from the front of Mitchell Hill Road, too, so...
And if you were to try to comply with this, what would the shape of that structure be?
The shape of...
Of the building addition?
Square. Oh, 14-by-16.
Right, but, and that's what you want now, correct?
Yes. That isn't built yet, so I'm saying we're going to move the deck over. The deck is where the addition is now.
Right.
We're going to slide the deck over to the end of the house and then put the 14-by-16 addition in, so the current door that goes out onto the deck actually would be the door going into the bedroom.
But if you were to try and put it there today and try and keep it within the compliance of the law, the shape of the building would be such that the room would be unusable?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, I would have to keep it much smaller.
Right.
Sorry.
No problem.
And the cost would also last.
Right, okay. The impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure and the existing use of the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or a structure which conforms to the yard size requirements.
I just said, "correct."
Yeah, that kind of goes back to that same question that we just talked about on that previous question.
Right.
And the applicant has not commenced construction or the enlargement or expansion of the building or structure for which the limited reduction of yard size is requested, so that the Board of Appeals is not considering an after-the-fact application.
Nope. Well, that's correct. No, I haven't done that.
You haven't started. Correct. And I think the other ones are, we don't necessarily need to go through.
You just need to have, right?
Correct. So what, the proposed addition, what is that going to be?
On the backside of the house?
Yeah, what are you going to use that?
Oh, it's going to be a bedroom, because right now I have a small two-bedroom, and when I bought the house five years ago, the bedroom I have now is in the front of the house, and it's right here on this corner. So there's a lot more traffic on Mitchell Hill Road than I thought when I bought the house, so I want to be able to put the bedroom on the backside of the house and have a little more quiet for sleeping, and add a three-quarter bath, too. There's another smaller bedroom in the back of the house, that's my daughter's bedroom.
So with a three-quarter bath, are you septic or sewer over there?
I'm septic.
Okay, you'll still be able to meet your requirements with that?
I will, because we're going to remove the wall where my bedroom is now and just internally enlarge the front kind of living area. Right now, there's a picture window in my bedroom. Don't anybody drive by, but anyway.
That's noted on the drawing as well, right there.
No, I'm just, I'm looking at more so from the tank perspective, from the tank perspective of the...
No, you're absolutely right, because we have to, we do have to remove that and not have it be a three-bedroom.
We addressed the legal requirement, so it would get another three-bedroom.
I was just trying to see if they needed to have a bigger tank capacity or anything moved out of the bathroom.
No, they're not. They wouldn't be increasing the capacity, they're just replacing one bedroom with an addition on the back.
But she said three-quarter bath as well?
The bath doesn't factor into the size of the system, any bedrooms.
Any other questions or a motion from the board?
Motion to approve appeal as presented.
That's appeal 2553. Yes, that's correct. Do I have a second?
Second.
All of those in favor? James, good luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
It's a variance appeal of the property of 35 Homer, Wilson Homer Road, tax map 019, lot 016, in an R2 zone. Again, you're approaching good. If you could tell us who you are and give us a brief explanation of why you're here.
My name's Trevor Watson, we're Frieter Investments. We're the contractors on the job, so basically I, because of the build schedule, the project changed a little bit, so, which is why you got the updated packet, so I had these large printouts made so that we could kind of briefly go through them quickly. So basically, these are the...
Sorry?
No.
That doesn't sound like it.
Yeah.
No.
So to familiarize yourself with the project, this is the image from Winslow Homer Road, and then as you work your way around the western side, the eastern side, the rear, and then the eastern side also from Winslow Homer Road. The next page is basically a survey as it exists now, and you can see the amount of structure that exists not on the property. There's about 13% of the structure that burdens Winslow Homer Road and also burdens in a butter, and then a significant portion of the structure exists within the front yard and side yard setbacks. And then the next pages are proposed. I'm just going through this real quick, sorry, just to...
Sure, right ahead.
Showing where we're going to remove, we'd like to remove all the structures not existing on the property and also remove the burdens to the side yard setbacks. And then there's a page taken from the Scarborough GIS showing the, even though it's not a survey, it's sort of showing the existing relationship found in the vicinity as to garages and properties that are burdening the front yard setbacks. And then, again, some more documentation showing with photographs the number of properties. There's about 25 properties on Jocelyn Winslow Homer Road right here, and even though I don't have surveys for all of them, it's easy to see that more than half are in noncompliance. And then the final page is just a sketch of the, sort of the proposed design of what we're attempting to achieve here. So, having said all that, basically, the creation of 35 Winslow Homer Road predates the zoning and the current road width requirements. As a result, 13% exists in the, off the property, on a neighbor's land and also in Winslow Homer Road. Another 51% exists within the front and side yard setbacks and 40 feet from the road's edge. So we're asking for a variance to demolish all the structures associated with this property and redevelop about 970 square feet within the front yard setback. And even though it's within the front yard setback due to the unique circumstance of these private roads where you have a 12-foot or 14-foot or 16-foot actual road width existing within a 66-foot right-of-way, there exists a significant amount of land which could be, you know, in intent utilized as a sort of front yard setback, and that's sort of the basis for the argument here. We're going to reduce the structures not on the property by 100%. We're going to improve the noncomformity of the lot by reducing structures within the front and side yard setbacks, and then we're also going to increase the distance between the road's edge and the proposed structures from 17 feet to 45 feet. Basically, what happened is the client realized sort of his own mortality, and he's interested in the concept of single-story living, not only for immediate family members, but also his own, you know, his own future. And so this proposal is for a garage and then a single-story, a garage and then a bedroom, a single bedroom, and then sort of a living space, all to exist on one plane, so he doesn't have to get into the, into navigating sort of vertical elements of stairs. There's capacity in the ground, in the lower level, for future bedrooms for, you know, to maintain sort of the value of the property, because, you know, people have, most people buy this property would have more than, you know, the need for one bedroom. So I'll just go through the question, questions now, or do you want to?
Why don't I open it up to the board to see if they have any questions?
Sure. Absolutely.
I have a few questions myself. Could you explain the relationship between lots 31, 33, and 35 a little bit better to me?
Sure. There, 31 is Mr. Zilka's primary vacation home. It's a John Calvin Stevens home that we renovated in 2006, and because it's a sort of a historic home built in an old-fashioned way, there's not really a lot of capacity for an elevator to be installed without significantly impacting the sort of historic nature of the house. 33 is a property that Mr. Zilka bought in 2009, and it currently is his guesthouse. And unfortunately, due to the nature of how 31 Winslow Homer Road is oriented, because all of these sort of homes existed kind of prior to zoning, 31 Winslow Homer Road is oriented in such a manner that it looks out across 33 and 35. And so the danger of having sort of something that negatively impacts multiple homes along Winslow Homer Road, not just his, it also includes 29 Winslow Homer Road, which is owned by somebody else, as well as 28 Jocelyn, which is owned by somebody else. It's just, it's an odd and unique lot in 35 in that there's this knoll that exists in sort of the 30-foot above sea level range, and then the property dips down to about 20 feet in the sort of, you know, in elevation, and then climbs back up to about, you know, 25, 28 feet as it approaches the ocean. So, and it also gets quite wide as it goes out towards the ocean. So there's this sort of like fishbowl effect that, the potential exists for that, for something to happen there.
And the structure you're demoing is under the foot, the new footprint for the new building, correct?
So initially, yes, yeah. The structure we're demoing, we are proposing to replace in, in, as much as practical. We're existing to develop over the existing development as much as practical. And why I say it that way is it's impractical. We're trying to be better neighbors to the K's in removing the existing burden in their side yard setback. So we're also trying to reorient the house so that it better follows how the other properties along Winslow Homer Road are sort of addressing the road. And so due to the reorientation and due to the existing impact on the side yard setback burdening the K property, we've had to pull it down, but we're still trying to maintain the majority of our development impact where the current development impact is.
And you said the, is it Zilka's?
Yes.
The Zilka's vacation home is on 31?
That's their primary, that's the first home that they purchased.
33's owned by a separate entity?
It's just owned, it's owned by Mr. Zilka, but it's in a trust's name.
Okay. But it is in a trust name, not his?
Yes. To tell you the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's in a different ownership.
Are you su...
It's an ownership he controls, but it's...
Yeah.
But it's in a different ownership?
Yeah.
And 35 is owned by him, but that's not his primary residence. It's a rental property?
No.
Okay.
He's not going to be renting any, I mean, I don't know that it, I don't know if it matters, but he's, I mean, he's not going to probably sign a document saying that he's not going to rent it, but he doesn't rent any of his homes.
But it's not his primary residence, it's just a investment home, or they're actually living in 31?
They vacation in 31, yes.
Okay.
And then guests stay, and his daughter, who's just had a child, stays in 33, which is the guesthouse. And then he bought it as a protectionary measure and then sort of tried to figure, you know, has figured out this use for it, which it'll, if we can do this sort of single-story living, it will fulfill the need of some, you know, his parents are older and they can't navigate steps, so that, they can't stay at 33 Winslow Homer Road because there's stairs there. They can't stay at 31 Winslow Homer Road because it's an older house, so this, you know, there's like 10 steps, 10 risers up to the second floor, so there're like, you know, eight-inch, eight-and-a-half-inch rises each step.
The reason I'm asking is the type of variance that you're into, which is a variance appeal, it has two of the hardest questions to answer positively for, for the board.
Sure.
So it's going down a path that is going to make it very, very difficult for you to justify how this will work, and we can approve it in a positive fashion, so I'm just kind of warning you, probably get your work cut out for you.
I usually do, so...
All right. Any questions from the board? Need some more time to think?
We'll probably have a few before we're done.
Okay. I'm going to take this time to open up the meeting to the public. If anybody wants to speak to this, they certainly can do it now. Seeing no one, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Letters, oh, excuse me. Thank you. I got those right. Three, oh, is that correct?
Three.
And this is, first one is from George Gillespie, and he's actually from New York, but it's, he is in the property of 35 Wilson Homer, excuse me, 32 Wilson Homer. Please accept this letter as my endorsement for Michael Zilka's variance request for his modified building plans for his lot of 35 Winslow Homer. My wife Eileen and I own the property diagonally across the road from the Zilka's property and believe his proposal will serve to beautify the immediate area for everyone's benefit. We couldn't be more pleased. Thank you. Second one was 28 Jocelyn Road, Natalie Kay. In regards to the appeal 2554, the request for a variance by Michael Zilka on the property of Accessors Map U19, parcel 16, I urge you to approve the same. I represent the K Family Trust. Our property adjoins the subject property, and we are very much in favor of the granting of the variance. And the third one is Albert Barclay of 36 Homer Road, across the road from the property that is owned by the Zilka's. We have seen the design or the drawings for the structure that Mr. Zilka intends to build and believe the proposal will only serve the, to improve the appearance of the property, so clearly they are in support of it as well. Anybody else from the public? Seeing no more interest, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and go back to the board. Questions and comments?
Should we just go down through the...
You certainly can if it's time.
Have questions at the time.
Okay. There are four questions with this type of appeal that we have to agree to all of them. What I will do is I'll go through them one at a time. We'll take notes on the questions as we go through. You're going to be answering the questions directly, and then we'll ask questions. First question is, the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted.
The, this structure currently exists as a seasonal home, and it is, the foundation is not such that, it's not resting on a modern foundation, and the natural topography of the lot results in the northern and eastern sides to have a significant grade change between, elevation change between the grade and the existing deck, which, due to the many years of deferred maintenance that this house has seen, increases the possibility, coupled with the ever-increasing storms, increases the possibility of catastrophic events happening. As it exists, because so much of the, of the structure is not on the property, we're currently not allowed to shore up the entirety of the property, and it's not logical to expect a homeowner to make the investment, to pour a modern foundation, to create a modern foundation under a portion of his property while allowing the remaining portions, under a portion of his house, while remaining the, while, oh, sorry, excuse me, while allowing the remaining portions of the structure which need to exist on a non-modern foundation to sort of move with the, with the seasons. It would be, it would be opening up an almost constant maintenance issue for the, for the structure as a whole. The variance will allow us to locate the structure entirely within the property and in close proximity to where the majority of the structure has historically existed and is echoed and enforced by similar structures existing in similar locations to be found in close proximity. It should be noted that due to the conditions specific to this lot, a 40-foot setback is... It should be noted that due to the conditions specific to this lot, a 40-foot setback from road's edge will continue to exist. And this is due to the 14, 16-foot wide road existing in the modern 66-foot wide right-of-way. Additionally, this, the structure exists in its current location atop a knoll, as I spoke of earlier. The rest of the lot falls down as it travels towards the ocean to then climb back up when it gets to the, the cliff walk, when it gets to the water's edge. So that, and that climbing back up happens within the 75-foot shoreline zone, so you can't build within it. So building within a hollow, which is essentially what the legal building envelope of this lot is, would impact the value of the property through not allowing existing views to be, to be able to be maintained. And to a lesser extent, accessing that hollow through the tight, steep, narrow terrain to travel down would add an incurred development cost and a loss of reasonable return. So it's entirely reasonable to expect the ability to maintain one's own views in rehabilitation and renovation of a project, which is why the house was initially sited on the knoll and why we're seeking a variance to rebuild in as close a proximity as reasonable while improving the lot and removing all the structures that don't exist off the property. So we're unburdening the surrounding areas. And also, you know, we're hitting a lot of the zoning. We're not hitting all of it, which is why we're here, but we're hitting a lot of it. We're going to, you know, clear the side yard setbacks. We're going to maintain in intent a 40-foot front yard setback. It's not, this road is never going to change, you know, so that, that is going to exist.
And you said clear all the structures?
I'm sorry?
You said you're going to clear all the structures off the lot? What do you mean by that statement?
I may have misspoken, so I'll just say it again. We're going to, we're going to demolish everything that's on the lot currently.
The structure that's on the lot.
Yes. But we're also going to remove, we're not proposing, we're going to remove all the structures that don't exist but are tied to this lot, that are, that do not exist on the lot.
Okay. Could you explain that? What do you mean by that?
So currently there's a garage, there's 350 square feet of garage that exists in Winslow Homer, in the Winslow Homer Road right-of-way. There's also a portion of the structure that exists on 28 Jocelyn. So we're going to, in removing all of the structures, we're going to alleviate that problem.
But it's still all one structure? When you say all the structures-
Yes.
-it's one building structure that happens to be on different properties?
I mean, there's a garage that exists on Winslow Homer Road and also in the front yard setback.
Okay.
So is that going to be demolished and not replaced?
Yes, that's correct.
So anything that's not on the property right now is going to be demolished as well?
Anything that's not on the property that is, you know-
Wouldn't it be easier just to say everything that Mr. Zilka owns on that particular, that's assessed on that particular parcel, whether it exists on the parcel or not, is what you're going to remove?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that statement.
I just want it to be clear.
No, I appreciate the clarification. So that's my argument for the reasonable return.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
When you were first discussing this with us, and I can't remember what you said, you said that the owner had bought the property as, I don't know, it may be wrong, buffer or something like that, or they had just bought it to have it as an additional property.
Yes.
To me, that's getting into this reasonable return thing we're looking at, because they bought this recognizing that fact, that they may not be able to do anything to that property. They just bought it as a buffer or an additional property to have, so they can have that whole area there.
Okay. They, I mean, I think the principal interest was the buffer.
Because the buffer would still be there even if they took the property down, and they could still get a reasonable return on what they bought the property for.
Right, but they couldn't, they, something needs to be done to the structure, to the existing structure that's on the lot. And so selling a, selling a parcel of land with a structure on it, with three stories of views from that structure, versus selling a parcel of land with, an oceanfront parcel of land with a residence that has one or one and a half stories of view is a vastly different financial equation.
Yeah, but now you're questioning reasonable return. Now, reasonable return does not mean maximum return.
That's, that's the toughest one that you-
Yeah, no, no, I'm just thinking, you know, I'm just working here.
And we have no way of notating it as maximum. Maximum is kind of out the window for us. We need to look at it as what it says in our guidelines, reasonable return. Can he have a reasonable return on the property?
So it would be reasonable to expect a return on a property where you have, where you are standing on a structure that affords you views of the ocean. The return, and I'm not suggesting maximum return, but the return on a structure where you are standing in it and looking at a wooded lot would have a different amount of return. I mean, it wouldn't be, if, if, let me say it this way, if it's not reasonable to expect ocean views over property you don't own, I mean, couldn't, couldn't the converse be said too?
Again, that's not a decision that we're here to decide on. So as much as I empathize with the applicant, that's not part of our decision-making process. The question at hand is, the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. So really what you have to do is look at all the options you have available to you, and if you do nothing, does that create a return? And if you do something, does that create a return? And is it reasonable? So do nothing is always an option. It's not always the best option, but it is an option. So under this question, I'll go back to you. It's difficult to answer, but if you can, the question is, can it yield a reasonable return, not a maximum return?
See, I, I don't think, I think that's, it's tough to quantify the difference, and I don't think it's unreasonable to expect on a buildable lot. If, if nothing is done, the house will need to be demolished for life safety issues. And that would be less of a return than what currently exists. Would, would the board agree with that?
Well, my assumption of is the applicant primarily purchased it as a buffer. They knew what they were purchasing when they purchased it, so they knew the condition that the property was going to be in, and that it was going to be having to require some type of either demo or rebuild within the envelope or whatever it may be. That, that's the toughest one. Right now, I can't see, you haven't given me any reasonable, any reason that this satisfies this question.
Right, so I'm trying to chain together some stuff here. The, if, if the board views a, if the board views a buildable lot with no structure on it as the same value as a buildable lot with a structure on it, then, then no one can ever achieve a positive answer to the first question.
That's why it's so difficult.
That's why it's in there.
It's almost an unanswerable question.
But shouldn't expectation exist that the, it's a, it's a habitable lot? And irrespective of why my client purchased a lot, he still deserves to get reasonable return. And reasonable return on a, on a property with a residence on it, with views of the ocean, would be like kind to have a modern, to be afforded the ability to build a modern structure on that lot of similar, with views of the ocean.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, this is a question and answer now.
Please, please. I haven't given you a chance to speak on it, on this one so far, so certainly, now it's time to hear from the town.
I'll just throw something out there for consideration.
Please do.
The courts have held, actually, that, you know, if you can go out with a picnic lunch and spread a blanket on a lot and view the ocean, that's reasonable return. So that's a really tough test, okay? But in this case, you'd have a much better argument if this was the only lot that Mr. Zilka owned, but he controls three properties. You could combine this lot with the lot next to it and, and add an accessory unit, a one-story accessory unit to that and not have to meet that side setback between the two parcel lines and still build within the buildable envelope and not even have to request a variance to do that. So, so there's reasonable return. That, that's, I mean, that's an example.
Right, and you said that, but reasonable return of combining two, you know, individual lots.
He controls all three. So combine the two lots, build an accessory unit on one floor with a garage in the, in the allowable envelope, no variance requested, you're done.
Brian, why don't you bring this up at the meeting that we have?
That's a good question.
I think I'd maintain that lots-
I'm just being the devil's advocate.
I, I think I'd maintain that lots, in all seriousness, lots of this size command a certain amount of reasonable return of financial, and I understand that reasonable return is not just the financial component. However, having said that, there is a, an outlier ability here. If you, if you all of a sudden have a four-acre lot in a sea of one-acre lots, are you going to achieve the return of, a reasonable return of four times the value of four one-acre lots? And historically, the data has shown no. So I would, I appreciate Brian's stance. I wish I'd known about it earlier, but I don't think, you know, I, I, I think that, I don't think that it's fair to be, I don't know that it's pertinent to the variance, and please correct me if I'm wrong, how many properties Mr. Zilka owns or doesn't own? I mean, I-
I don't think necessarily matters in this case, but this isn't his primary residence either. I think, not that that is a question-
None of those.
Forgive me, but I don't think that that's a requirement either.
Right, not in this case either, so I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would you care at this point, or is it too soon to survey the members as to how they feel on this?
I think it's too soon. Let's get through the other questions first. But I think, well, actually, I'd like to stop the questioning for just a moment.
Sure.
And give the town to speak more on this, because I didn't give you that chance before we went into the questioning. Was there any more you wanted to add on?
I think I've said plenty.
Okay. Well, you've had open discussions with, with this appellant before, and I didn't know if there's anything else you wanted to add before we went further.
Well, originally, the only thing I would add is originally when Trevor first approached me about the possibility of applying for a variance, one of the compelling reasons was that Mr. Zilka needed accessory, he needed an accessory building. He needed a garage, which he didn't have any place to put other than on this lot. And the discussion that ensued was, how can you have an accessory building when you don't have a principal building? If they're going to remove all of the structures, then build a garage, you don't have a principal building. So if only the two lots could be tied together, that wouldn't be an issue. But because they're separated by this parcel in a different ownership entity, even though it's controlled by the same person, you've got two distinct, separate parcels. So the, the conundrum that Trevor was facing was how do we, how do we get him his primary goal of storage and have a principal dwelling? During the process, Mr. Zilka rethought the whole thing, and as Trevor explained, came back and thought, well, you know, this is, this is actually a good thing. We need to build, build a dwelling here. Let's build a dwelling that I can live in in my old age, and that's really all I can add to it at this point. And not to, you know, certainly anybody has the right to appeal anything, basically, but it's different in my mind because he controls the three properties. It's not a, it's not a, I don't want to ding the owner for having control of three properties, but it doesn't carry the same weight as if some individual came in owning that lot, bought it for the principal use of the residential dwelling and didn't have the ability to combine it with the lot next door because they didn't own that. So that's, that's the point I was trying to make with that.
Yes.
It, it just has a different-
And I do commend you on removing the properties that aren't on the property. That's great. I mean, you've got some good ideas. It's just, it's going to be very tough for us as a board, especially the four people, I think, to get past that number one question. We can certainly go down through the next three, but I think that's going to be a catch one.
And I, and I would like to push through just in case it is, if we go the direction of tabling, we have to give them direction as to what we would be looking for if they ever came back, so.
Well, in the final-
I'm not saying that we're going that way, I'm just saying it's be, it behooves us to go through all the four questions.
And just one, one more thing. There is a buildable envelope there. It's a small buildable envelope.
Right, and they are pulling it more in compliance. They're coming off the front and coming off the side.
But the fact remains that a structure could exist in the buildable envelope, and that's the hard, another hard part to get over. It's great that they're making more, or, or, excuse me, making less non-conforming plans here, but the fact remains that you have a buildable envelope that you could put a structure in, and that's really where you have to go first.
Would that have to be a two-story due to the size of the buildable envelope?
It's possible to have to be anything, is whatever you want to design.
Okay, let me pull it back together if you guys don't mind.
Okay.
Any more questions on question one or comments from the board? We'll come back to it.
Sure.
Let's go on to question two. Need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general condition of the neighborhood.
So 35 Winslow Homer Road is a non-conforming lot with challenges and features, which we've discussed here, that differentiate it from its neighbors. The existing house predates zoning and road width requirements, which speaks to a portion of the structure existing outside of the property line. It's also a uniquely shaped lot with topography that naturally drops in elevation as it hooks in front of adjacent lots. And I'll add, that's, that I didn't write here, not, it hooks in front of other lots that aren't just, I mean, not necessarily hooks, but it would be impactful to other lots that, that aren't under Mr. Zilka's control. Also, I would just, you know, I just want to reiterate that this is, you know, this is, this property is extraordinarily unique in how the existing development, the existing road, and the existing road interact with the existing road width requirement and the existing property lines. So, you know, the, the board can view, the, the town can view a less than 40-foot setback in this zone as a sort of an undue burden on the, the community. But the same thing can be said that, you know, a greater, an imposed greater than 40-foot front yard setback is effectively another burden, and it's a, you know, it's a burden on this property, which further differentiates itself. And that's unique to this relationship between a 15-foot wide street, 16-foot wide street, and a 66-foot wide right-of-way. And nothing in Scarborough zoning really, really deals with that. Thank you.
I would think on this question, I have no problem with this because it's very unique. I mean, I would think that's the simple finding of the fact. You've got properties that are not on the property line that are off, you've got properties built on ledge, you've got a very unique circumstance for this existing property, so I have no problem with B.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I'm in agreement with that. I think this is a unique property. I think we need to look closer at the buildable envelope that's on this particular lot, and I think we'll come back to that. But I agree with you on this statement. Anyone else? Okay, let's go on to question three. Granting the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality.
The variance we're asking for will take a non-conforming lot and structure and make it significantly less non-conforming. The positive impact will be, will be fourfold. First, we'll remove all the structures existing outside of the property, reducing the current impact, and reduce the current impact to the front and side yard setbacks by 50%. Second, we are reducing the structures in close proximity to the road, both in, to Winslow Homer Road, both in mass from two stories to one, and in footprint from 1,900 square feet to plus or minus 970 square feet. Third, we will increase the front yard setback from negative 21 feet to positive seven feet, which when combined with the actual road location will effectively provide the 40-foot front yard setback. Fourth, utilizing the natural topography of the property to our benefit allows a residence to be imperceptible from the road and also from the ocean, as our structure exists with zero impact to the shoreline zone.
What are the size of the structures adjacent to it?
In terms of square footage? In terms of square footage?
Yeah, roughly just ballpark.
Yeah, 33 is probably about 4,000 square feet. 28 Jocelyn is, I would say, 3,500 to 4,000 square feet. 32 Barclay is probably 5,500 square feet. 36 Gillespie is probably 5,500 square feet. 33 is probably 5,600 square feet.
And this finished structure would be, was it 900?
It would be about, no, it would be about 2,000 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if you include the basement, which at the lower level, which at this time is sort of unfinished.
What would that add to-
Well, that, it would be about 1,000 square feet per floor.
Additional, okay.
Yeah. So it would be in total 2,000 square feet.
Now, my question for you would be putting a 2,000-square-foot structure back in place where you're between 4,000 and 5,000 square-foot homes. Is that within the character of that?
I'd just like to note that, I think I said 33 was 3,500.
Okay.
And if you go down the road to 26 Jocelyn, that's a 2,000-square-foot house.
Okay.
And if you go in-
What was that number? I'm sorry.
26-
26, okay.
Jocelyn, I believe is 26 Jocelyn. It's the K of butter.
Oh, Jocelyn, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There's 26. There's 26.
That's good information for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, because this size, you can see right there. I, on this one, I mean, and I don't know if it's considered finding a fact or not, but it seems like it's enhancing.
Well, it's a newer structure. You're bringing it up to modern codes. No question.
Yeah, it's taking things that don't belong where they're built out, so.
But this was around character. That's, I'm just, that was specifically my question. But if there's another property close, then I think you've got an argument there.
There's two down.
It's one. Any other questions on the third question? Comments? Okay, let's go on to the fourth. The hardship is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner.
I would say no. No work prior to this has reduced the ability to make this property and structures on it less conforming. Less non-conforming.
And when did he purchase the 35 lot?
2011, maybe?
And 2009 was 33?
Yes.
Okay. And 31 was when? Sorry.
31 would have been 2005.
Okay. I'll hold my comment. I was just thinking-
Well, in a way, I kind of see where you're going with that, especially what Brian said that it was originally going to be built as a garage, but then you had to put a structure with it, because that was probably the primary purpose of purchasing this property.
My sale date is 11/30/2012.
2012, okay.
But that one's a hard stretch if we're going to go there.
I mean, if I could add, it was that, being totally upfront, it was the primary purpose of this, because he already had a guest house, and he already has a vacation house. But when we came back to him and said, you can't, the town won't allow an accessory structure without a principal structure, we thought about what, you know, how we could utilize this land as it is intended, you know? I mean, these parcels are not really intended to be vacant lots. They're intended to be residential areas. And so fulfilling the need as sort of an accessible structure for his limited mobility, family members, as well as himself, you know, anticipated in the future, he's quite, you know, he's on board with.
Right.
Yeah, but he did create the action to buy the property to put a garage on it, so.
Yeah, but I don't think-
But I don't-
I don't think he created a hardship by buying your property, so I think that's a fatal part.
Right, yeah.
So, again, I think I can move on. It was-
I think I better know where you were on it, but yeah.
Yeah. I was kind of going that way, but I don't believe what I'm thinking, so.
That's not good.
Okay, so we've gone through the four questions. I'm looking for comments and questions from the board.
I have a comment regarding the existing foundation of the property. You say it was deteriorating. Do you know how quickly, how fast? Is there going to be a timeframe when the property would just be uninhabitable?
So it's tough to say. These structures are, I mean, they're 100-plus-year-old camps that are basically built on, they basically take a flagstone, a flat stone, throw it on the ground, and then put a tree trunk on top of it.
Right.
And it's not, with Mr. Zilka owning this, you know, I mean, it, basically, the way you do this is a constant maintenance battle, where you inspect the property and you replace the rotten posts. The garage does have a slab on grade. However, it's cracked and, you know, heavily deteriorated, and, you know, there's always the chance that, you know, with as much maintenance as you can do, something happens and portions of the structure get lost. And the issue with that is if portions of the structure get lost, even though there's no real tangible, you know, bartering chip that's happening, without some of these elements, it would absolutely not be possible to ask for a variance, I think. So as time goes on, Mr. Zilka's sort of forced in a direction, whether or not he wants to go that route.
Right. What would be lost? If you were to completely build the property in the envelope without any variances needed, what would be lost by putting a structure there with a garage and-
Within the legal building envelope?
Yes.
I believe reasonable return would be lost.
I'm not asking reasonable or anything. I'm asking-
Oh, sorry.
What portion of the structure would not be built if you had to put that in there?
We would probably not build the garage because of challenges. It's a lot easier to access. We would keep, maintain the parking up here in this range, and it's going to be a lot easier to access a structure that's in the hollow via, you know, a footpath or something like that. You know, navigating that terrain with a vehicle, it would require a significant sort of, you know, earthwork kind of deal going on.
So all that living area right there, because he really wanted the garage, all that's needed for this structure?
Well, I think if we could respectfully move past the, he really wanted the garage, because now that we've presented him with this option, he really wants a garage and a single-story-
Okay, but what I'm saying is if you were to put that garage in a single-story residence, what would he lose in his single-story residence?
If you push the garage back to the envelope?
Yeah.
What's it knock out of the structure?
Oh, okay, so if we slide everything down, so there is, if we slide everything down, I mean, he's not going to lose any square footage, per se. You know, again, I'll reiterate that it'll take, it'll be an added burden to deal with, you know, there's probably, you know, four or five feet elevation change between the existing location and the start of the legal building envelope. He'll be, in my opinion, further burdened by a greater-than-80-foot effective front yard setback. And the, you know, the structure will, if we do not step the structure, it will be, there'll be a significant impact to the cliff walk.
But it could be done.
It could, absolutely could be done. No, and I don't, I don't mean to imply that it can't be done. It's just at what, you know, at what cost. So if you look at the lower right-hand corner, you know, that, this is the-
This is 33. This is 31. If this were pushed out more, it would give the appearance of being projected higher into the, you know, into the air. And it would, I mean, it would look like a three-story structure. I mean, conceivably, we could-
There are some of those down there.
I would say they're two-and-a-half-story structures, because you start, you do start to run into height restrictions, maximum height restrictions.
You want to take a poll, Mr. Sherman?
I'm going to take an informal poll. How's that?
Okay.
This is not official.
Sure, I appreciate that.
On question A, the landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless a variance is granted. What's your opinion?
I don't think it meets that. I don't think, I think there's options here and-
There are, you would like to see other options considered?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd be the same. I don't think it meets it. There are other options. We just, there are other options. It may not be the cheapest option, but there are other options.
In addition, I will say that I think that's our way out of this, is if we look at other options and exhaust those, I think that's the way to go.
I have to concur. I'm trying to find a way out of this, but I think we have to look at another option for this as well.
I appreciate your input. I just, can I just ask a question?
Certainly, please.
The, I'm failing to understand how variances gain approval if views are not considered reasonable return.
That is not part of our criteria.
Isn't there a financial component to the reasonable return?
There could be, but it's people's opinion, and that's not one of the areas that we try to delve into. I mean, there are good things about this project that we like. Are there any complaints from anybody?
No.
You have letters from the abutters.
Yeah.
It's bringing a structure that may not be up-to-date, up-to-date. You're pulling in from properties where we wouldn't want the structure to be in. Those are all very positive things. But the question is, will it yield a reasonable return if we don't grant this? And I can't look out in the future and say this property is going to be, it's going to fail beyond use in five years. We don't have the technical ability or the vision to be able to say that. That hurts the person that owns this property, because they're trying to maintain it, and they're trying to improve it and increase its value, which I think all of us as property owners ourselves want to do the same thing. But when we're sitting on this board, we have to answer the questions in good conscience and good faith. And if it ever goes to court, we need to back that up with fact, not opinion.
Mm-hmm.
So right now, to me, the facts lean towards, you still have a reasonable return with the structure if you try to maintain it, or if you do a modification to it, but not quite as big as this, meaning pulling the envelope back to that buildable, that buildable envelope.
And we can table it.
So if you squeeze it back, then I think this question, you've done your due diligence in trying to keep it within the buildable envelope, so it's easy to answer this question saying, yes, it does have a reasonable return. Now, what you have to do is look at what that costs to get you, and is it worth doing or not? If that makes sense.
I believe the option would be for us to table this, and you can go back and revisit that, come back to us, because if we officially vote on it and it's denied-
Yeah, no, I understand that. Do you think that there would be an argument that you could foresee that would sway you to?
I mean, if it's being built in the envelope, if it's being built in the envelope, then that's something that we strongly look at.
But outside of the envelope. I mean, I'm not, you know, I can't go for limited reductions because of the shoreline zone.
Does he feel if he goes within the envelope?
If he's in the envelope, he doesn't-
Yeah, I don't need a-
You know, we don't need a different kind of type of variance. We're good, right?
No, no. If he were to retain some of the original structure, then he could potentially maybe jiggle it so that a limited reduction of yard size might be applicable.
Yeah.
I thought, it's shoreline, though. Doesn't-
That doesn't matter, because you're not, we're not reducing the setback to the resource only to the property lines, the sideline and the street line. And that part of the parcel, that part of the structure is not in shoreline zone.
Well, you could talk to the owner about Brian's suggestion.
So you think, you think that if we build within the envelope, that there may be some options? And I'm asking your opinion from the town.
Well, again, if he builds within the envelope-
No, I think with the development.
Right.
Yeah, the existing, the develop, building, proposing within the existing development or footprint.
If you utilize the existing structure, you mean?
Right.
Yeah, I think there are some-
There are some options for having a viable structure that would work for the-
But I, you know, it all, it's hard to answer because I don't see a proposal in front of it.
And you don't know what they're looking for. It's an opinion of your-
I mean, have you done an assessment on what it would cost to put a foundation under the structure and bolster the existing structure, and maybe, does that structure lend itself to an elevator so that it would be easier to access?
We haven't, because we can, we can only, you know, we can't do all of the structure.
Sure. But, you know, I mean, I think the board needs more information. For example, you know, the comment that the existing structure needs to be demolished. Well, maybe a structural engineer's report-
Sure.
-would help us understand why that is. Your description of the existing conditions is good, but we don't have a professional, not that you're not professional, but-
I'm not.
More, you know, more supporting argument, I think, would be necessary to satisfy the board on some of those points.
I think that's a fair statement.
I would echo the chairman's comments. I think he's done a great job at improving, you know, with the proposed, the proposal in front of us. He's a great job at improving things, many things, about the parcel and the structure, but it's still, again, the whole reasonable return thing is a tough nut to crack. It's probably the toughest nut to crack.
So just for my own edification, this last question for everybody else that's waiting. If I came back, if we came back with a proposal that was inside of the setbacks, but within the existing footprint, I could then go for a reduction in yard?
No, you'd still have to retain some of the original structure.
Right.
You can't wipe the structure away, because now you don't qualify, because there's no longer a structure there that-
Could I come before as a variance to do that? Because I'm meeting the requirement of another variance, and, I mean, coupled with a structural engineering review.
Again, the question-
It's just going to get hard, that question.
The question that's stumbling is, can you yield a reasonable return unless a variance is granted, and regardless of the envelope? Really, that, the question will come back to us. Now that you're within the envelope, you're still coming for a variance, and can you answer the question any different now? And I don't know if I can.
Okay.
I think Mr. Longstaff's suggestion of possibly, if you can do what he's suggesting, coming possibly a limited reduction in the yard size if you keep some of that envelope of the building, maybe.
That's just-
It gets us away from that reasonable return question.
Sure, I understand.
Right.
It's not on there.
I can't do a side yard and a front yard, though, right? Can it only be one?
Yeah, no, you could do, you could do a combination.
Okay, great.
We've done that before.
It's a different set of questions under that.
The other thing, Trevor, too, is that you can't come back with the same request in a year, but if you substantially changed, if the design substantially changed, and the setback variance requests were completely different, different numbers, you know, that kind of thing, you could also, I mean, that, the board could entertain another variance request-
Sure.
...inside of 12 months if it was substantially different than the original lot.
Okay, great.
Just to be clear.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
So, yeah, what are we doing?
Right, so it sounds like we want to make a motion to table? Yes.
Motion to table, appeal. What is it here? 2554?
Yeah, that's correct.
Second.
For further information.
Further information, so you can work with the town and see if you can come up with another type of variance, or work within the envelope itself without having to need a variance.
Perfect.
That makes sense.
My variance question's still going to be there.
Okay.
When's Mark come, oh, no, sorry.
All those in favor, table.
He would have only been one anyways, and he probably would have gone the same way.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Again, the towns will work very closely with it.
No, no, I have experience in that, so I appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
He's probably not going to talk to me anymore.
Well, yeah, based on the comment, yeah, I agree. Could have told him upfront, for crying out loud.
Thank you. I was going to say, 45 minutes this time.
Moving on to appeal 2555, which is a variance appeal for, hang on, I got to get the right page up here, 19 Vesper Street. Mr. Fisher?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Members of the board. Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions here this evening, representing the Dayton's, with their request for a hardship variance. with their request for a hardship variance. Hardship because a portion of their property is actually located in the very back end of the shoreline zone, doesn't matter how much, we touch a corner of it, so it puts the whole project into, any project, into a hardship variance request. The board may remember that we were here earlier this year requesting a functional division of this property. There are two cottages that are currently on the lot, one forward and one immediately behind it. As we'll also probably recall, those of us who were here, the pension of the board at that time was, we ended up tabling that request, because the pension of the board at that time was to say, "We really don't feel comfortable utilizing the criteria of a functional division when we're looking at structures that are up front and then behind, as opposed to side by side." We certainly understand that, took that to heart. This project was actually, the two houses that are on there right now, the project, the property, was actually marketed for about three and a half years unsuccessfully. There were a fair number of people who were interested in one or the other of the cottages, but literally nobody wanted to buy both, or buy the property with both of them on there. And the board had suggested, when we were here this past springtime, that it would probably be much more palatable to try to market the project, not with the two cottages on it, but as a single lot, let people tear down those cottages, they're only seasonal cottages, one was actually a fisherman's cottage that was brought in about eighty years ago to the lot. Tear down those cottages, and then rebuild ostensibly a single house on that property. So that's indeed what our previous clients had done, and lo and behold, when they marketed it that way, they had a potential buyer in about six weeks, and that buyer has subsequently purchased that property, based on some of these comments, and they have now submitted before you the variance request regarding a single-family house that will be constructed on that property. So what we have essentially is a fifty-by-one-hundred lot that has two cottages on it that we're proposing to have removed, and replaced with a singles, individual, single-family residence that will show on the plans that you've got where that will actually fit in the lot. Now, interestingly, we've been able to design a house, Mr. Wilson, Walt Wilson is here, who's the architect on this project, and he was able to design a house that is considerably more conforming, albeit still non-conforming, because the building envelope with most of the projects and most of the lots that are in Higgins Beach would never have significant building envelopes to be able to rebuild any structures nowadays, anyway. So what we did was, we reduced the non-conformity on all three sides that are non-conforming, which means there are all three areas, which is the front and both sides. The back was not an issue before, and it's not an issue now. We meet all that criteria. Brian had a comment earlier in his comments to staff that we may want to think about this, given the, what we believe are gonna be the imminent zoning changes. That is certainly a possibility, but in this case, it's a time equation, as you're all aware, for Higgins Beach, we've got some significant time constraints. We can't really do, we, meaning anybody, can't do any significant construction, external construction, until the middle of September, and then the season pretty much starts to close down with the posting of the roads around the middle of November-ish. Winter construction, while anything can be built during the winter, it gets a little bit more challenging to do, setting the piles through the frozen ground in this house, I'll get to that in a minute, will be on piles because of its location in the erosion hazard area zone. And then, winter construction is fine when you've got something framed in, but it's a little bit more challenging during the winter, particularly the winter like we had last time or this past year. And then again, the window of opportunity that we have in the springtime is also limited to about two-plus months before Memorial Day, at which time there's a unofficial moratorium, where building any significant building is highly discouraged in a non-emergency situation. So given that, the Dayton's are ready to go, actually. They've got their contractors lined up, and they hope to be able to start demolition, and then construction, at least for the piles to get into the ground, and ostensibly to get a house framed in this year, and then hopefully they can work on that over the winter, they, meaning the contractors can work on that in the winter, finish things up as we go into the spring, and they would ostensibly like to be able to move in about the late spring, early summertime of next year. Given that, we certainly understand the sentiment, it just doesn't happen to work with a Higgins Beach issue because of this very narrow window of opportunity. So, in the interest of brevity, given that, you have a bit of a background, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and then we can go over the criteria when you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, before we go into that, I just wanted to disclose that I have a relationship, business relationship with Mr. Fisher that I already spoke with you about.
Yes.
I don't feel it's gonna have any problems with my decision-making, just wanted to open that up to the other board members.
Certainly, disclosing that, what I'd like to do is open it up to the board and see if there are any issues with us continuing you as a voting member.
No.
I agree. I'm just gonna put it to vote, just so it's clear, for the three that are here, all those in favor allowing this to continue? I agree. So, we're good. Any questions from the board? Seeing none while they're focusing, I'm gonna go to the town. And anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Fisher said?
Sure. I put forth some staff comments on this particular proposal.
Yep.
It's a standard variance because the property is in the shoreline zone, so again, he has to meet the same tests as the last appealing. The narrative indicated that they were reducing the overall footprint, but I haven't seen any lot calculations or actual building calculations, footprint calculations, so I, it's hard to verify that, for sure.
And Mr. Fisher, do you have those numbers?
Yes, as far as the footprint is concerned, I have a percentage of lot coverage. The overall percentage right now is about thirty-six, just in excess of thirty-six percent. The new house would cover thirty-four percent. Plus, the, again, the reduction on both sides, where the house is being narrowed, where the building envelope itself is only about eighteen feet wide because of the parallelogram skew of the lot itself, and then we don't have any problem as far as depth is concerned.
What about impervious surface?
It's, I don't know what...
Current versus future?
Well, actually, it would be the same, because, well, the impervious surface right now is gonna be slightly greater than the thirty-six and a half percent, as far as the houses are concerned, because there is actually, there are actually two driveways. In this case, I don't have the figures for the impervious surface that would be in there now, except that it's thirty-four percent as far as the house coverage is concerned.
Right.
And there would be only a single driveway there, so it would be less, I just don't have the exact figure.
Okay.
But what about the area in between the two cottages? Is that, was that non-vegetated or vegetated? Or partially vegetated and partially non-vegetated?
There's partially non-vegetated, most of it is vegetated, but we're also...
You're losing all of that.
Well, we're not really losing, we're losing that particular area, but we're also narrowing up the house. When you take a look at the superimposition, your plans, there's a superimposition of the new house over the old cottages, and there's a good portion, particularly the front cottage, that is outside of where the new cottage would actually fit on the lot, which is why we're getting more conforming, or less non-conforming, I should say, than the cottages are right now. It does take up more space in the middle, but that more space is then obfuscated by the narrowing of the house relative to the cottages that are now.
Well, because, because the majority of the house, the majority of the project is inside of the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot shoreline zone, we'd need to see the actual figures on that, the actual square footage and the percentage of lot coverage, non-vegetated surface, not only structure, but non-vegetated surface.
Okay, all the structural information is on the architectural plans?
Right, but we don't have, unless, unless I've missed it, and I don't see any of those calculations.
Well, my other thought is, you said that between the two structures, it was thirty-four to thirty-six percent, existing thirty-six, you're going down to thirty-four, that gains you about two percent. Looks like the lot's about fifty-by-a-hundred, which is about five thousand square feet, so you're only talking about a hundred square feet. The driveway would probably be more than a hundred square feet.
Well, except that there are two driveways now.
Okay.
And we're only going to one.
You're gonna...
I don't have the exact figure, will all be less, based on what you see, I just don't have that, how much less it will actually be.
But my point, Mr. Chairman, if I may, my point is, we don't see it on the site plan, we don't see the calculations, we can't verify anything without those, you know, we don't know what the driveway's gonna be, it's not even shown. So there's some missing information here, which makes it very difficult to, you know, make some decisions.
Yeah, I guess we would need that information.
I agree. The other thing that I failed to point out in my staff comments, is I didn't realize this, I guess I missed it somehow, but there's actually an accessory unit being proposed.
Is that what that is, to the right of the rear building?
At the back of the building, if you look at the floor plan, I'll bring it up here.
Okay.
So here's the floor plan. I see. And if I can scoot over, I just failed to, I failed to raise this issue in my staff comments, and I wanted to point it out. You see two kitchens here, you see a kitchen, if I can move my cursor up here?
Yeah.
And a kitchen here, so there's an accessory unit in the back of the building, and under normal conditions, that would be fine. In the shoreline zone, it's, it's considered a second dwelling unit, requiring that, the lot, all the dimensional requirements be met for the additional unit. And we've had this issue raised before by Mike Morse of the main Department of Environmental Protection, Shoreland Zoning Coordinator, so that is still an issue, in that this lot's only a fifty-by-one-hundred lot, barely five thousand feet, five thousand square feet. The minimum lot size in the R4 zone is ten thousand square feet. So at this point, I don't think there's any way we could approve the accessory unit, although it's not mentioned in the proposal, so it's a little bit of a...
That's a good pickup. I didn't see that either.
No, wait a minute. Brian, you and I discussed that earlier, and I thought that the feedback at that point was, as far as the zoning is, zoning board is concerned, that we're looking at the one structure, and that if it goes in conjunction, it's not a separate building, that you would, as the codes officer, not that you would, but you would be able to...
No, the conversation that we had, Jim, was that it was a bone of contention with the DEP, and that they might consider, if we amended our ordinance, they might give some consideration to them being in the same structure as opposed to having a separate dwelling. That hasn't been done yet. No amendments have been made to the shoreline zoning ordinance, and the finer point is, if you look at the definition of dwelling, residential dwelling unit in the shoreline zoning ordinance, it doesn't, it doesn't give us the same definition that we have in our regular zoning ordinance, which says accessory units are not considered dwelling units. So, as you know, when you have two overlying ordinances, it's always the more restrictive that rules. And Mike and I have started to have that conversation. I don't necessarily agree with that, but that's the interpretation that's there, and it's clear in the definitions. So our hands are kinda tied at the moment on that accessory unit issue. We may be able to work out something, just as, we may be able to get an increase in the non-vegetated surface, it hasn't happened yet, but verbally, Mike has agreed that because of the average of all the properties that we surveyed seemed to be about thirty-five percent non-vegetated surface, that might be the new norm, as opposed to twenty percent, which is far more restrictive. And the reason, reasoning for that is because of the storm drainage, and the fact that that's the settlement pattern at Higgins Beach.
Oh, absolutely.
So there's some things that may come along, they're not there yet, and the accessory unit is one of those things, we're not there yet.
Okay, as you did mention, I appreciate that. You did mention, as far as lot coverage is concerned, because we're reducing the lot coverage, and again, I apologize, I don't have the actual figures here, and we can certainly provide that to you, but that has never been an issue as far as the DEP is concerned, if we are reducing the coverage and moving and/or moving anything further away from the shoreline zone.
And I agree with that, I just need to see it.
Okay.
Okay, I need it to be verified, for sure. Those calculations need to be provided.
Yep.
The other, the only other thing that I would, I would bring up as a staff comment is, is the fact that the building that's being proposed is, let me see if I can find it here. The buildings that are being torn down are both single-story structures or a story and a half?
One and a half. One single-story, one's a story and a half.
Okay. And so the proposed structure is basically two and a half stories, maxing out at thirty-five feet in height at the ridge, quite a bit, quite a bit different than the existing structures. I don't have it on that one, let me go back here, just for the board's information. If you, if you were building a house at Higgins Beach in the permitted envelope, fifteen feet from the property line, you would be limited in height to thirty feet. If you got, if you went any higher than thirty feet, you'd have to increase the setback so that you were no more than fifty percent of the height of the structure.
Yes, but we talked about that as well, because keep in mind that because of the EHA zone, where we have to be able to elevate the property, it has to be on piles, we don't have a choice, it has to be.
Yeah, well, I'm not so concerned about, I'm not concerned about the elevation due to the, due to the flood plain, or the, excuse me, the dune. What I'm more concerned about is that you're going from a one and a half to a two and a half or better story structure, instead of a two-story structure, which, this whole wall, if you look at this front elevation, let me get to the front elevation, the front elevation's on the right-hand side of your screen, that's what you're gonna be looking at from the street, and this side here, that's the right side. This, this view, this left elevation, is the view that's gonna be looked at on one side of the property, which is the closest side of the property, the seven-foot setback, I believe, right?
Yes.
On the left-hand side, looking at. So that's, that's quite a difference, if you were, if you were to stand on the property line looking at this, as opposed to what you're looking at now with the two cottages, that's a really distinct difference. And because we have that fifty percent setback rule, we really, I think, as a board, there should be some consideration given to, there's no stepping of the height to that building, it starts out at the max height, basically at the eve line. And to me, that's, that's an issue that we're dealing with in the zoning rework that we're doing now, and I think it's certainly a consideration, I don't know if any of the folks that are here in the room have any, any comments, and that certainly would open it up, maybe, I don't know. But it's, to me, it's a concern that we shouldn't fail to address as, as we consider the structure. So those are a couple of things that I didn't get into my staff comments, and I apologize for that, I kinda rushed through it, and then I was examining them further, and those are just some additional thoughts that I normally, I guess, would've included in my staff comments and failed to. So again, those are points that I think the board ought to be at least considering and debating and questioning, and that's, that's really all I have to say.
Are you saying that we need to see the driveway and the vegetation on here, before we can...
Well, I think that you need to be able to verify what the difference is. They're saying they're reducing the footprints of the building. By taking the two buildings down and combining them into one, it's less footprint, there's two driveways there now, but then there's vegetated area in between the two buildings that, I'm just not comfortable guessing that it's less, I'd like to see the actual geometry in the calculations, and actually show the driveway depicted on the plan. I can't pick off that site plan if that's even shown on there. I don't know if anybody's got better, better eyes than I do, I just can't, I can't see that stuff. So, to me, that's important stuff, if it's in the shoreline, it's very important. If it's not in the shoreline, which a lot of Higgins Beach isn't in the shoreline, we're only dealing with building footprint.
Right.
And so it's not, it's not an issue. In the shoreline, it is an issue, and we're required to look at that.
So we need to see that in a new set plan?
That's what I think.
But again, I think, I think the way we can move beyond that right now is, we can have Mr. Fisher work with the town, make sure that that's published, and as long as it meets what was said here, we're okay. As long as it's less, we're going down and not up, I think we're okay. But again, we have to state that.
I think, I think for the time being, the board's real purview here is to look at the setback issue and...
In the four questions.
In the four questions.
Correct.
The, the actual lot coverage, I'll retract that, because that could be covered under the building permit request.
Right.
I have to look at that, or the code office has to look at that before they can issue the permit.
But as part of the board's information, we should normally have that, and you usually do a great, I'm not saying you're not doing a great job here, do a great job in supplying that. It would benefit us to help that here, and I think we can continue to move forward without it saying that we need it, and as long as it meets the criteria, which will be checked by the town, we'll be okay. If it doesn't, that kicks it out.
So we can make that contingent a part of it?
Correct.
You can make that a condition, make sure.
Correct.
Yep, I think that that would be acceptable.
Okay, so, no more comments from the town right now, we'll come back to you?
I'm shutting up.
We will come back to you, I'm sure. Any more questions or comments from the board right now? What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna open the meeting to the public, see if there are any comments from the public. Yeah, if you would state your name and your address?
I will. My name is Philip McGoldrick, live at twenty-one Vesper Street, down at Higgins Beach, and I have a few comments that I wanna make. My family has lived at twenty-one Vesper Street since nineteen forty-seven. We were there in the fifties when they put the second car... Street since 1947. We were there in the 50s when they put the second cottage on the adjoining 50 by 100 lot at 19 Vespa Street. Both cottages on that lot were single-story and had space between them, and we didn't have any problems with that. If the build, if the building that they're planning to put up there is approximately, and I grafted out, 70 feet long and 35 feet high, I'm going to feel like I'm in New York City when I look at that side of the building from our house. We, we have had two houses, two cottages across the street from us, and we've had one beside us that have been redone over in the last couple of years. And they fit the neighborhood. They, they blend in beautifully. They just did a nice job. They didn't build some monstrosity. They, they fit the neighborhood. And as a matter of fact, the neighbor on our left, the whites, they're only three feet from our property line. And we came and we spoke in favor of them because we saw the plan, and we felt like what they were asking was a reasonable approach. So it's not like we're going to hear complaining about everything, but this is, is a giant building sitting on that 50 by 100 lot. I know that you're going to be working with the Higgins Beach Association, looking at the ordinances for the beach. We've had notification of that down at the clubhouse, and we'll certainly be there, you know, because we, as beach residents, as long as we have, we have that concern. We, we don't, we just want everything to not stay the same, but be reasonable in their approach.
Certainly.
And that's about the, about the size of what my notes are. I can give you a copy of them if you want.
I think we're okay. You're on public record. If I can paraphrase for you, your, your biggest concern is it changing the character of the location?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Your Article III.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else that'd like to speak? Please. Same condition, if you can tell us your name and your address?
I'm the wife of the co-owners of that property, 19 Vespa Street. I'm Mary Ann McGoldrick. And I picture a 10-foot driveway and a seven-foot setback, and put that big picture up there again.
Uh, Mary Ann, can you lower your mic for us? Just pull the mic down. Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, I just want to hear you well.
Yeah. It's, it's like, that's, it's right there, and it's huge. And I, I guess I can't comprehend that the combination of that little shed that was in the back, the little house in the back, and the footprint of that house in the front, that this thing is actually 2% smaller. I, I just don't see that.
Yeah, and they're just talking about the aerial footprint, if you were flying over in a plane, that the footprint has gotten smaller, not the cubic feet of the volume of the building, just the square footage that takes up that lot. So that's what they're saying.
Right. And the setbacks, I think, are really important, especially for our side of the, our side of the road, and the, also the, the view of the ocean. Right now, from our second floor, there is a view of the ocean. That is history when that building comes in.
And I'm sorry, could you clarify, what address are you from, again?
21.
21, I'm sorry. I misheard you.
So are you saying that in your assumption too, that would alter the character of the neighborhood dramatically?
Definitely. And we have seen the houses that have done it right, the way, the way we...
In your opinion?
In my opinion.
Certainly.
In my opinion, the ones that seem to do fit the character of the neighborhood much better, you know?
Certainly.
Almost all the way, all the way up Vespa Street, all of the renovations that have been done in the last 15 years have all been very, what I would call, classic conservative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, please? And again, same rules, if you state your name and your address, please.
My name is Llewellyn McGoldrick, and I'm a co-owner at 21 Vespa Street. And as my brother has pointed out, we have never objected to any of the other construction that's gone on around us because it, it was unique and it fitted in to what the neighborhood really is. And like, we're worried about that big wall right outside our window, not too far away. And if the town is thinking about changing in its ordinances and things and setbacks, we'd like to see maybe a delay to see what the future holds. It just won't fit in right now, to be honest with you.
Again, you're, you're questioning the character of the structure?
Yeah, I'm questioning the character.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, come on. Come on. Certainly, please step to the mic.
This is all, this is all new to us, but when you look at the two cottages, there's a space between the two cottages, I don't know, 10, 12 feet, whatever it is.
Yeah. Yeah. On the backside of those...
Yeah, I don't think you can get there from there, but...
The Chalbert and the Judith on the backside. There's a space in there.
There's a visual break.
Yes. Well, it's, they put cars in there and everything else. My question is that if they're staying within the same footprint, that means they can fill in that middle section that's...
No, that, that would count as square footage.
Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah, if you look at, and I, if you could, oh, I don't know how to do this. Can you, can you put this to, uh...
Yep. Seems like they're getting playing here.
Cause I think you were going to play basketball there or something.
You know, it's like a kid. You get them on the internet, you can't get them off.
It's here somewhere.
Yeah, right there. If you could zoom in a little bit, you see the big, thick line that makes up a semi-rectangle in that view?
Yeah.
That's the new structure. And then behind it, you see a hashed area of a building in front, and then a building behind it to the left, right. So if you look at that footprint, it kind of goes outside of the new structure's envelope. And then if you came more towards the front, the building in the front goes more to the right. So it's adding up all that square area that sits outside, and you put it in between, and it kind of fills in that gap. And they're saying if you add up all the square footage of the big dark versus the lights, it's 2% less with the new structure. And that's, it's just the planned view, looking down as a bird would fly over. That doesn't mean the volume, because don't forget, those existing structures were one and one and a half stories. Now you've got two and a half stories, so it's a much bigger volume.
But that's just, that line is just drawn in a little bit. That's the backside of the car.
Yes.
And that's just drawn in a little bit, but that whole space...
It, it will all be filled in, no question. So the, the person who was speaking stepped away from the mic. He was just saying the area between the two buildings is now going to be filled in with the space of the new structure, and that is correct. And someone just said wow, so.
So this view, this view is the whole structure?
Correct.
So you, you know, it's, the middle part of that left elevation is where the space was or would have been between the two cottages?
It, it's quite an impressive structure. Okay. Any more comments or questions? Are you sure you don't want to make it all for you? We'd, we'd love to hear from you. Okay. Seeing, seeing no more interest from the people in the public, thank you very much for speaking. I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting and go back to the board.
Do you have any letters, or you...
We did not.
Uh, there are no letters. But I would, I would, we, we've heard from three people.
Right. I just didn't know if there were any more.
Hello, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, please, the board, I'd love to have the architect just come up and explain a couple of things.
Certainly. We haven't heard from you for a while, so please.
Hello, Walter Wilson from Design Company. Heard some comments about the size of the building being an impressive size and all this. I want to bring to the board's attention that this building is actually less in size than some of the others I've done down at Higgins. One of approximately the same size, but slightly bigger, who has just finished up on Ocean Avenue, which should come in on, on the main street. That is just about the same size as this house. The setback is just about the same thing as what this proposal is from their sideline also. And it's done in such a way that when you drive into Higgins Beach, if you hadn't been there in 10, 15 years, you'd think that house had been there for 40 or 50 years. It fits into the character. And I know character of a building at Higgins is a questionable thing, depending on who you're talking to. And I look at it as a ongoing, changing character of Higgins Beach because of the improvements that have taken place. And the character of the new buildings that are built are not the same as they were 40, 50, 60 years ago out there because of the new things you have to put in to a building today than you didn't, than you didn't have to do back then. Now, talking about that, this does have what Brian calls an accessory unit built into it. There is a reason why the owner, who actually happens to live at Higgins Beach, by the way, had been looking for a lot that they could do a building which they needed for their needs. They have a special need child who's growing up, and she's living on her own, but she can't live by herself. And this lot had two living units on it. So the two living units had already been established on this lot. And the proposal is for what Brian calls the accessory use, which is actually the second living unit, which is going to be for their child, who is around 20, 21 years old now, has to have supervision all the time. That's the reason for that unit that's in there. The overall size of the building, we are hindered by the fact we have to be on pilings and raise it up out of the ground, and the first floor is going to be over five feet off the ground. And so we have to get the building to fit within the 35-foot DEP maximum allowable space. The square footage of the proposed building is slightly less than the combined footage of what's there now. So in designing this building to satisfy the owner's needs and what they needed, we aren't trying to build an overly built, too big of a building that requires all kinds of extra things in the house. It's pretty much what they need when you can, because we've got to put that second unit within the building.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
If you look at, you're looking at square footage and saying the planned footage is less, right, or...
The planned, the, the lot coverage footage is less.
What is the usable footage within the building now? If you looked, you had a one-story and a one and a half story, I will almost guarantee you, you've doubled the usable space in that building.
Probably.
So one of the questions we're going to be asking though...
That's done on a lot of the houses that we do at Higgins Beach.
No, no, no question, but you had two smaller buildings. So I'm, now you're going to hear my concerns. The question I've got to answer is, this land in question cannot yield a reasonable return unless variance is granted. I honestly believe, when I saw this, that someone was trying to take advantage of us.
Well, I got up to speak.
Wait, let me, please, let me finish.
I got up to speak just to the architecture of the thing.
Okay, let me, let me finish, please.
About that part.
So to answer the question, reasonable return cannot be gained unless I give you this variance, why would I give you this variance? I feel like someone's trying to take advantage of us. Build within the buildable envelope and don't come to us.
It's impossible.
Explain.
The buildable, buildable envelope is like 14.5 inches wide. So it's impossible.
I know. So that's why I'm saying I would like to see a reasonable approach, because I don't think this is reasonable. I think you guys, not you, I think the owner wants to maximize their profitability and not worry about reasonable return.
The owner wants to reside there for the rest of their lives.
And I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
And I, to be honest with you, when I saw this, I went exactly where these folks were talking, the people that spoke, is I wouldn't want you to put a drive-in theater wall up next to my home, my one and a half story home, and you put a sail next to it.
I can, I can, I can understand what, what you're saying.
Yeah.
I can.
All I looked at that, I looked at that side elevation, and I was like...
But I've also come to this board before and got the same-sized buildings, everything approved.
And I think you're seeing the change. I think one of the reasons why the zoning is being modified is that the board members went to the town and said, we've got to do something different. And I think they're coming up with a very viable and op, a reasonable option for how we should be building in that area, because the lots are so small, there are not constructible lots. I know that. But that doesn't mean that you should have huge homes down there either. It's not within character, which is question three, of that area. Yes, there have been people that have got the puck by the goalie. I think that's happened in the past, and I don't think we're going there anymore.
Well, I, I think that the home that we have here is in character with the current conditions that are happening at Higgins Beach. I don't think it's out of character.
Would you say it's in character with the two residences that are right located next to it on either side?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Would you say it's in character with the residents that are located right next to it in the immediate vicinity of this?
No. Their character, their home is different. But they could do the same thing.
And I think that's what we're trying to avoid for everyone.
Well, I think in the long run, it comes out for a better community.
And it depends on how you define better.
Yeah, it does.
Affluence?
Same, same as you...
Tax base?
Same as you look at everything else. It's an eye-opener, you know?
That's right.
But I, this house that I've got here is, is, is not excessive as to what I've already been doing at Higgins Beach.
And I think, again, like I've said, I think where we have been and where we are today are two different places. So what I'm going to throw out to you is, I think...
But I'm working with the same guidelines that I have right along. Guidelines haven't changed.
Okay, so I will...
So how are you supposed to do any design work?
No, no, that's fine. I will put...
If you're thinking that things are going to change, but they haven't yet, and you're, you're hindering myself and my applicant because of what you think is done before should be different now, where we have no guidelines to go by that have changed, the same guidelines.
But what you're saying to me is, over time, I can't learn. I can't make different choices based on experience.
Oh, sure you can, just like I do too. But we have guidelines to go by. If you're setting up a, a situation now where you're saying our guidelines for this project should have been different because you want to do something different, I can't hit a moving target.
You're right.
You know?
I agree. But that's why we've had meetings down at Higgins Beach. You know what's coming.
Oh, yes. I participated in the meetings.
Yeah. And I was there too.
Yeah.
So I, I'm with you. And I, I think that's the direction that we are going. So my, again, my recommendation, and it's not just me, is that I think we ought to wait until that ordinance comes out, and that would more closely adjust the size and look of this structure so that it fits in the character more eloquently, more accurately with where that area is going to be. And I think it also fits in the, the, more closely with the reasonable return.
Okay. Well, I want to address the second unit for a minute.
Sure.
Brian has called it a, an accessory unit. Back when I started on this project, I had talked briefly with Brian with two or three other jobs at the same time. And this property has two living units on it now. And originally, I was, I had thought of proposing it for, under the non-conforming use section of the ordinance, where it says any non-conforming use can be brought to the board for an enlargement, expansion, demolish, alteration, and so forth. And the site has two units. Existing use of the property is for a two-family, and so I was going to bring that to the board as well as the accessory use. So we aren't trying to slip in any from building. We're going to look at it as a non-conforming use redo on the lot, so that we're going to, I was going to come under that section of the ordinance. The little apartment that is there does fit within the square foot allotment of accessory use. And under accessory use, though, we have the situation that Brian brought up about in shoreland zoning, and accessory use has to meet the setbacks and so forth. So my question to you then would be, if we came back with this as a, the non-conforming use two, two unit on the property...
Yeah.
And...
Where do you sit?
Right.
Certainly.
Then we wouldn't be confined by the accessory use definition of being in the Then we wouldn't be confined by the accessory use definition of being in the zoning, insurland zoning, because we have that, two units already there.
Right.
So that would probably be part of what we may have to do in the explanation of this. Now, the other thing...
Can you give us a, a minute to discuss that? Maybe we can come up with an answer?
Yeah.
Okay. You've got two structures on the lot now, right?
Yeah, Walt, Walt raises a good point. There's two structures on the lot.
But you could say one of them is the primary, one of them is an accessory unit. You could say that.
You could possibly say that.
Right.
My, my only concern, and unfortunately I didn't get comments back from Mike on this particular project, I'm only going by other projects that he's weighed in on and had a problem with it. I don't know, once you, once you demolish the two structures, you, you've taken that away, I guess I need to, I need to get some legal guidance on, can we then combine the, the two units into one?
I think if you look at the ordinance, what you'll see is that a non-conforming use on the property isn't eliminated until more than twelve months of non-use. So if the buildings were destroyed and the new building built within the twen, twelve months, the non-conforming use has not gone away yet.
Yeah, and, and that may be, that may be the legal interpretation of that. I just, I only raise the point because Mike has always pointed to those accessory units as not being allowed. So I, I'd need to get a clarification on that before I could be comfortable, but I, I think there may be that leeway there. I, I raised the issue just because I hadn't gotten comments back from him. Obviously, they weigh in on our shoreline zone variances, and I wanted to make that known to the board because it wasn't specifically pointed out in the application that there was an accessory unit there.
And, and actually...
I do remember we talked about it, Walt. We, I talked to a number of people, and you in particular, about, about multiple projects, and I failed to recognize this one as one that we had talked about.
Yeah.
But it wasn't specifically mentioned in the narrative of the...
No, and like I said, the owners of this property, when they purchased it, bought it knowing that it had two units on it and knowing that they needed the accessory use or a second unit within the building, which is the reason why they ended up purchasing this one at Higgins Beach, for that reason.
What's the need for four bedrooms?
The immediate family takes the three bedrooms, and then they have the attic bedroom for their second family's mothers, fathers, in-laws, that stuff that come for summer vacations and so forth.
What would you say the average number of bedrooms in the homes being built in Higgins Beach is now?
Between three and four. And I bring that, I say between three and four. We just came in here three or four months ago with an appeal for one I did, they had a three-bedroom house, and we, they went up into the attic, they had the fourth bedroom just like this one's doing. Three-bedroom houses, on some of the, three-bedroom houses on second floors, we have a space downstairs which would be either a dining room or a guest room, depending. So that's why I say three, three to four, depending on the, on the property.
This one's got an office space too.
Right.
So that could have been a bedroom.
What's that?
That could have been a bedroom.
Which one?
The office space.
He runs his business from home and he needs his office space.
How many bedrooms in the two existing structures?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
You don't think it's four though, do you?
Pardon?
You don't think it's four though, do you? In a one-and-a-half and a one-story, in that footprint? You're doubling...
It could very well be two in each one, for all I know. I mean, the bedrooms in those cottages are only about eight by eight.
Two in each one? Is one of those a living room?
No, there's a lift.
Just checking. All right.
I should say on the assessors too, we should be able to see that right there on the property report card as to how many bedrooms are in each unit.
It's not a public meeting, so we, we can get to that if we needed to.
Yeah, that existing front cottage, if I remember right, when it was roughly measured, it's like thirty-two feet wide. It's quite wide on the property.
Oh, yes.
And the front steps, I think, are four feet from the front street. And we're going to push the building back about ten, twelve feet further, and the building's only twenty-six feet wide, so the front yard's going to be opened up considerably considering what's there now. So we're trying to reduce that front yard setback quite a bit. And also the side yard setbacks, if you look at the plans, the existing buildings are closer than this. Now, I understand, of course, they aren't as high as this proposed building, but the proposed building fits within the, the limitations we have as far as the size of buildings and so forth were allowed down there. So considering what we had originally, with the two cottages with the space between versus this building being a one building, yes, there's going to be a difference. But, you know, like the board knows, the state domain has no site view restrictions either, so...
Sure. So are there three family members right now, each having their own bedroom?
I'm sorry.
Are there three family members right now, each having their own bedroom, including the child that needs to have the accessory unit?
The, the child that has accessory and has her own.
Okay, but there's two other...
And there's the master bedroom with two others, and then you go upstairs for the, for the guest bedroom.
Okay, so they have two other children in addition to the child that has...
Yes.
Should we go through the questions?
Any other questions from the board, comments?
I just wanted to get up and just kind of give some insight as to why we ended up with what we got.
All right, thank you.
And to show that it's, you know, and my, my position is, it's not bigger than what the board's approved before.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? You want to go through the...
Three, couple of comments, Mr. Lawrence, that didn't you say that the spot size wasn't, would not allow a accessory unit because of its size being five thousand square feet?
If, if you were apply the, the standards on a brand-new house, if there wasn't the two dwellings already there, that's kind of a, a point of contention that I've got to look at, as far as interpretation goes. But yeah, if you were just replacing a single-family dwelling and trying to put a single-family dwelling with an accessory unit there, the shoreline zoning standards indicate that you have to meet all of the dimensional standards of an individual, a single-family dwelling for both dwellings. So you'd need twenty, you'd need a twenty thousand square foot lot in order to put an accessory unit or a second dwelling unit on the, on the property.
Okay. And as all this discussion for the character of the neighborhood and whatnot, I, I just hope zoning repair fixes this because I don't, I agree with these folks, I don't think that's a very neighbor-friendly design. Thirty-five feet so close off the property line is going to give you that feel of New York City. I mean, I, I've seen it down there, I, I think it's, I hope it's addressed because I don't think it's right. I think if you have these people, these cottages and you, you come right out, you step over their line, you come up thirty-five feet, it doesn't seem to make sense to me at all.
And, and if I can speak to what you're saying, Mr. Wilson has a good point. Our board has allowed this in the past, but the time that's changed since we've made those decisions till today, I think, I, I can speak for myself and Mr. Stark, we've gone to training on how the board is supposed to judge on these type of appeals, and we are now, we are now educated or more educated than we were before. So to, to go back in time and say, I know you approved that, you're right. That's why I'm saying you might have got one past the goalie. Not you in particular, I'm saying people in the past may have gotten that bias, or our opinions may have changed. It's because we've been educated. And I know there are multiple other members of the board that have now gone to that same training. And on variance-type appeals of this type, basically the MPA says it's not the exception to approve them, it is the exception that you don't approve them in a ninety or a ninety-five percent case. So, and we have been very open to letting these kind of things pass in the past, and when we realized that we might not be going in the right direction, that's when we started talking to the town about changing the zone, to make it more clear so that we don't feel like we have to compromise. Because, and again, in a quasi-judicious state that we sit, we have to answer these questions in good faith, and I think some of the board members, and I'm, I think I'm speaking for Mr. Maroon as well, because he was not on the board at the time, I think we are changing the way we look at it. So yes, it may seem like we're changing the rules on you, even though the rules are the same, it's really opinion is changing, not the rules. The rules have stayed the same, like you're saying, but our opinions of the people sitting at the board are starting to shift because of education. We're now, I'm hoping better at what we do, might not seem better if I'm in a position of turning one down, but I think we're better at what we're doing because from a legal standpoint, we're making better conscious decisions so that the town doesn't have to go to court for decisions that we make that are bad. So again, I'll get, I'm getting off my soapbox.
I, I think we're, we're adhering to the guidelines. I know there was question and discussion about guidelines and guidelines, and we have very specific guidelines.
Correct.
And some of those trainings have pointed out to us that we've been deviating from those guidelines in a way we may not have, should have been.
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, yes.
Yeah, and so we're, we're really focused on making sure that we're, we're following to the letter of the law as to how the guidelines are and taking everything into account and making sure that we listen to the people. And we've always listened to people down there, so we appreciate when folks do come for us because it gives us a much better perspective, because we can't necessarily drive down there ourselves and see your homes and see the other homes. But I think we've got two challenging ones on this one, so...
Now, Mr. Richard, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but you had two, three questions? You got one out there?
The third was what Mr. Crocker just said.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
And Mr. Fisher, please. Yes. I'm just going to interject something here since we seem to be on the topic and this is not specific to this particular project.
Mm-hmm.
And we have discussed a little bit about this before, and that is, practicality tends to be far ahead of bureaucracy, as it were, in terms of zoning changes, notwithstanding the imminent zoning changes that are coming with Scarborough. What I'm getting at is that because of the imminent changes from FEMA as far as the flood hazards are concerned, and not really recent, but somewhat recent, changes by the Maine Geological Survey in expanding the erosion hazard areas that are out there, please keep in mind that in the future, not just with this project, well, although it is germane to this project, but others as well, when you see it, this actual project is basically a two-story building with dormers off the roof. It's big, call it what it is. However, because of the flood issues that we're dealing with, even though none of the regulations have yet caught up to this, we are required, because of the EHA zone, for instance, and the flood hazard zones, to take any houses that are being, that are new, are constructed from the ground up, to elevate these houses with a minimum of three feet of freeboard to the lowest support joist, which means by the time you get to the finished floor, first floor of any structure, you're over five feet above grade anyway, relative to a lot of the houses that were not built within the past half a dozen years that are sitting at grade. So when somebody says, oh my God, thirty-five feet, that's pretty high, it is. It's allowed per regulation, and this is not a three-and-a-half-story structure, which is what thirty-five feet would typically do if you were able to build as most people do at grade. This is, in this particular case, it's a two-story structure with a roof that's five feet higher than it would normally be because we don't have control over that. We have to put it five feet above grade. And then, again, that's not just this house, that's any new construction that's coming, that's in a flood zone or an EHA zone, doesn't have a choice, it has to be that level. So that doesn't necessarily sway your opinions, but just keep that in mind for the future, that any new houses, you've got five feet automatically basically taken out of the equation, or put into the equation, depending on how you look at it, over which we have no control.
Okay, thank you.
And we re, we recognize that, but I think the magnitude, like I'm seeing and what the chairman's seeing is, it's, some of these rooms are pretty big. So, I mean, they could probably still do what they're looking to do with a little bit less space. I have a very small house, so all my rooms are like eight by ten, it was built in nineteen fifty-five, so, I mean, no, and the point's taken. It is overbearing on some of the neighbors because it is big, and I, I mean, we've requested to try to combine, and that was our thoughts to you when we were talking to you about it before, and you came in leading with that. But I, I don't know, it's, it's, it's just tough to get over the character issue and...
It's probably going to be tough to get over the feasible alternative, because I really think this, even I know, someone I always question you on is the feasible alternative, and that's the toughest one for me.
Just based on the size you're talking about?
No, I think there's, I think there's another alternative. I, I think it could be smaller, or it could, it could still, I, I don't know. Reasonable return, I guess, was what I was getting at.
Okay.
And, I mean, I get someone wants a nice big house, I'd love to have big rooms too, but...
And I understand the point too, Mr. Fisher, but I look at this cottage and say, that's, that's essentially five feet off the ground, this, this little cottage.
Hmm.
You know, I mean, so it's not five feet, I, I understand that, but I've been involved in projects down there, don't, a couple of them that have been put on pilings and met the FEMA flood levels, and they all look pretty normal. This one looks pretty large, I have to say.
And bringing it up does...
And I agree, it's a sizable...
Does make it larger to the people that are looking at it around too, because you're already, like you said, you're already five feet off the ground before you even start looking at a structure.
And therein lies one of the issues, but it's only one. And, and to be sure, to address your comment, going from a one-story structure to a two-and-a-half story structure with a significant roof pitch is fairly significant. I would only mention that, or mention with that, that we have, notwithstanding, you know, board's past actions, when we were here in April, getting reconsideration of a board, you may remember that I passed out a dozen photographs, literally twelve photographs of houses that are literally three stories, not two-and-a-half stories, three stories, that are in that end of Higgins Beach. Are they next to smaller houses that are one stories to jumping up to two-and-a-half? Not always, to be sure, but some of them are. And most of us are, if not all of us, are very familiar with Higgins Beach. I would just encourage all of us, not in conjunction with this project necessarily, but to take a look at, and the next time we're down there, to take a look at some of the newer houses that are there. Some of them are, and even some of the older ones, actually, especially some of the captain's houses, as it were, that are right down on the base, the, the main road that fronts the ocean, are quite sizable. Some of them are actually four stories, they're older. But over, what I'm getting at is overall character, yes, you don't want to go, you know, sound like a, or go up and down all over the place, but on the other hand, if we're allowed per statute, we've got to really take into consideration that the changing demographic is going to allow people to be able to come in and take some smaller cottages that are, in some cases, a hundred years old and need to be raised, and they're going to replace them with larger structures. Subject of interpretation as to what is large, to be sure, but they're, almost all of them are going to get more sizable than they are right now.
And to be honest with you, you were probably the person that pointed that out to me more as to how I was looking at these with one of your pictures. The picture of the lighthouse, I don't see how that could possibly have been built down there. I mean, because that wouldn't have been something I would have been on board for at all. And I mean, when you brought that picture, I just looked at it and I was like, how is this, how is this even allowed? Because it just, it stood out so much from the character of the neighborhood.
Again, I, I appreciate the discussion, and I think, again, we've grown as a board, and we change our opinions all the time based on experience, so what, why don't we go on to the questions, unless you have more to add?
No.
Okay. All right, let's go to the questions. The land-in-question cannot yield a reasonable return unless a variance is granted.
Well, given the feedback from the board already, what I will do is just, and I appreciate going to the questions so that we can continue to get this feedback, so when we do come back with any revisions to the plans, and I presume we won't have to redo a lot of these questions as we go through them.
Right.
So the answer would be, as you've got before, you, the, the current lot supports two separate structures that could not be sold separately or were marketed as such, and, and they had no success doing that. The previous owners thus accepted the advice of the ZBA earlier this year and sold the lot to the current owner as a property that would support a single structure. Without a variance to support a single structure, the lot could not be sold, it had been marketed for three years with no potential buyers, because of the very small building envelope, a single structure could not be built on the lot and no reasonable return. A single structure could still not be built on the lot, no reasonable return could be expected. The, the reference toward that end is, the two cottages there right now did not yield the return, to be sure, reasonable or otherwise, from the previous owners. We took the, the advice of the board and the people that did buy it, irrespective at this point regarding the size of the structure that they're proposing, there were two structures on the lot. When those two structures need to come down because they couldn't be sold that way and replaced with one structure, if they come down, there's, or, or you were left in the size, or the locations and the sizes that they are right now, there wouldn't be any reasonable return. The people who owned it couldn't sell them, even though they actively marketed them. So a single-family house is what we're looking at. Size-wise, we can certainly take a look at that in the future when we come back, but as far as reasonable return is concerned, we need to be able to put something on that lot, and that something would typically be a, a single-family home.
I would disagree.
We're not voting right now, but, thank you.
I didn't know if you were asking for our opinions.
I was asking for comments, but yes. I was asking for comments, but yes.
Yeah, I would disagree just on the basis that I think something, and if we're doing a finding of fact or anything, that it seems like something a little bit smaller could be built there and could still yield a reasonable return.
Sure, but notwithstanding size, there's no issue as far as tearing down the existing cottages and building another house there?
I'm all for doing the one structure, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
And I'm the same way, getting, I think, can we also talk about the accessory unit?
Of course.
In this case? I think putting an accessory unit inside this structure is a reasonable thought process, having two separate buildings to start out with, going to a single building trying to have the same use. So getting an accessory unit inside the structure makes sense to me. So I don't think you're pushing the envelope trying to do that. So I think that's reasonable, so I think that can be accomplished.
Yeah, as long as we can get that put through.
Correct, it's got to go through.
For the town to be able to be okay with DEP, I have no problem with that either.
Right.
I think that's a great way to do it, especially with a child with disabilities. I have one myself, and I'm hoping he'll be living on his own when he's 25, but I don't know.
Mr. Richard, in your opinion, do you have an issue with the accessory unit being allowed in this structure?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay. Any issues?
No, my comments mimic the others on the board.
Okay. So, does that give you good enough guidance?
Yes.
Okay. Question two, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not a general condition in the neighborhood.
This is a fairly simple one. The variance will enhance the neighborhood character by replacing two existing detached units with one structure, thereby bringing it into greater conformity with the area than what is already there currently. You'll note that in most areas of town, but in particular Higgins Beach as well, most of the, the character of the neighborhood is typically taken up by one structure. So I think it's a greater enhancement, certainly not a detriment, to get rid of the two smaller cottages there and actually combine them into one house, irrespective at this point what the size of that house would be.
I would agree, because I, I like the fact that you're combining them into one. The cottages look like they need some work. They look like they've probably got some substandard, probably electrical or other issues there. So you're bringing it up more, kind of, you're enhancing the neighbors' values as well with a newer home that's going to make it look better.
I agree. And again, like you had said, taking into effect the FEMA floodplain requirements, raising it five feet above the ground, I can certainly appreciate that, and obviously combining the two units into one, two significantly older units. So yes, I agree with this point.
And I think, also to add to this, the unique circumstance of this property is that it has two structures.
Yes.
You don't find many that have two structures down there, so I think this is an obvious yes based on that.
Okay.
And it was encouraged to be sold as one, two, come back before.
You did attempt to do that, or the owners attempted to do that, and they found that they couldn't, so.
Correct.
Okay. Third question, the granting of variance will not alter the essential character of the locality.
The variance will enhance the neighborhood character by replacing two existing detached units with one structure, bringing the lot into greater conformity with the area than what is there. So there, too, I don't think that there's any problem as far as character of neighborhood regarding a single house. We'll work on the size.
Struggle with this one, just from the comment from the neighbors. I think this is, looking at the pictures that we saw up there, I think doesn't fit with the surrounding houses around. Yes, there's probably houses down there that are bigger, and it probably would be in the character with those. And I don't know if there's anything that can be done, I mean, I'm just throwing this out there. I know you've got an accessory unit, maybe there's something in the middle where there could be a deck area where the two came together or something, less imposing of one big structure. I don't know. That may be not something that could even be done, but then at least you've kind of got like one property together, but breaks it up a little bit, so it's not this big thing right there in front of the neighbors.
We can certainly ask them.
And it gives the other person, it gives their adult child a little bit of privacy, too.
I have nothing to add, I was just, was, had, I just was thinking another thought, but I'll wait for that.
Okay.
In word form, I can, I can agree with the statement that you're taking two, again, older structures and replacing with one newer structure. However, I am struggling with, after viewing the plans, the, just the, the significant size of this building matching the existing character of that neighborhood, having, have gone through that neighborhood myself. I'm just struggling with it right now, that's all.
And I think my opinion on this one is, we've talked about physical size of the structure, and I think in different areas of Higgins Beach, there are larger structures. But this is like urban sprawl, right? How do you get urban sprawl? It's one step at a time. It's moving out from the center of the city and moving all of that building structure away from the center of the city. And I'm looking at this as if it's urban sprawl. We want, we now are taking the next step, we're putting the next big building in smaller buildings. So to me, in, in that statement, you're changing the character. It's now creeping out further from where we've already got it, and it's going out into other areas. So I think it's just one more step, and it's, it will change the character in this particular location. You're surrounded by smaller buildings. And, and I know you've come to us with pictures of, there's a one and a half, there's a two and a half, there's a two and a half, but it seemed like it was more concentrated. I'm pretty familiar with this area, and I think this one's going to stick out, in my opinion.
Even the last one you did that was bigger was right across the street from the other one that was bigger.
Right.
So it made it a little bit easier for us to look at this and go, okay, well, the neighbors got a pretty big house over there, they don't have a small cottage, at least. And you were trying to mirror that, too, by putting the rooftop deck and things, so you were trying to really accentuate the neighbor, the character of the neighborhood as opposed to changing it. I mean, you were working to kind of grow the two together, which was appreciated.
Okay. So I think if you would work with the family and try to minimize, I think it certainly would be beneficial.
Okay.
And I know, and I empathize with the people that are doing this modification. They want to get as big a structure as possible because you want to get the value, you want to get usable space. I understand that. But I think in order to make it work for us, it's going to have to come down a little bit. And that's, that's my opinion, though, I'm not, I don't want to speak for the board, but that's my opinion.
Understood.
My comment was, Brian, wouldn't this, as we discussed with Mr. Watson, wouldn't this be a perfect candidate for a reduction in yard size and working within the envelope?
It's going to be really hard, though, with the two existing cottages, to really reuse those, because you have to maintain some of the existing structure. And I think in this case, it would be very difficult to make something work with limited reduction of yard size.
And as Mr. Wilson said, there is an available envelope. If you go by the rules, then it's, it's a stick of gum.
Yeah, it doesn't look like either one of those structures or anything you'd really want to try to build new off from, either.
The existing ones?
Yeah.
No, that's, those, you run at them hard enough and they're going to fall down.
With some of the proposed, still in draft form and yet to be, you know, for public consumption, but some of the proposed amendments, those 15-foot side and rear yard setbacks would be reduced with the additions of some porches and some lower structures, and it's sort of a tapered effect where you go up to the higher part of the structure in the center of the lot, but at least you can have something, I'm not sure what the distance will be, but in the neighborhood of seven or eight feet, which is pretty close to what you're asking for, and not require a variance. And that's kind of part of this whole puzzle, is having to review this under the four criteria as opposed to being able to permit it without a variance would be a world of difference. And it's going to be maybe a little more of a challenge for the designer to design something for this family that works for this family, but still, you could do it without coming and having to meet those criteria with the amendments. And I, I know you said you opened the comments by saying that timeframe doesn't work for this family, but it may be their only option. And, and it'll be a good option, I hope, once the amendments are enacted and give them more of what they need without having to come before this board and, and address those criteria. So it's, it's something to think about.
And any other comments on the third question? Okay. Fourth question, the hardship is not a result of the action taken by the applicant or a prior owner.
That is correct. The hardship is the result of zoning that was enacted long after this lot was created and the building constructed, thereby restricting any new construction to an extremely small building envelope that is wholly impractical for any residential structure. This is sort of a generic almost when we're dealing with lots and houses on those respective lots, whether it's Higgins Beach or anywhere else, that predate zoning. The hardship was not actually created by the current owner or any previous owners. The houses were built as they were on any given lot, and the lots were created in relatively small size way back when. So it's not anybody's fault, it's just zoning came on after the fact and causes us significant restrictions.
Yep.
That's a relatively simple one, but I'll leave that to the board.
Yeah, I would agree, it is relatively simple on this one. I don't see any way that that would be a no for me, that's definitely.
Not to that.
I think we're all in agreement.
So as I understand it, if I may, if this is the appropriate time, it sounds like there's really not an issue notwithstanding vertical size. And obviously, I'm not going to hold anybody to anything official this evening, but toward that end, the feedback we get is the lot's basically fine, a single-family residential house is pretty fine, everything basically meets the criteria except for the overall volume of the house.
Yeah, to me, I, I, did you say it wasn't a three-story home?
No.
Okay.
It's a two-and-a-half, well, call it what it is.
Because I see a bedroom on the third floor, and to me, that, that.
It's a dorm.
Okay.
Two small dormers in the middle.
Okay.
Yeah, it's two and a half, because you have no basement.
Because to me, it appears like it's a three-story home, it looks very tall to me. And I know you, you add, automatically you add five feet, so you get a five-foot disadvantage right there. I get that, but, and everybody's going to have that from this point forward.
Right, just, that's a generic.
That's a given.
Right.
It just looks awful tall to me. And.
And long.
I mean, it's long as well, but I, I'm not, I don't want to push you in one direction. Yeah, if you could reduce the envelope, I think certainly that would be a big benefit.
Understood.
Any other comments generally?
Do you want to motion or?
No, I'm just trying to give, Mr. Fisher, I think where we're going is to table.
Yes, we'd lead like to table.
And I just want to give him as much advice as we can so he doesn't come back with wrong information and waste his time.
Well, I think, I think the other advice, Mr. Longstaff, just had suggested on the new maps or new plans, to have the driveway.
Calculations.
And the, what else were you looking for, vegetation on there? We can definitely see that as.
Oh, yeah, we have that, I'll just, I can pop that into the plan that's.
And we still need to get DEP opinion on the accessory unit as well, they could trump us.
Yeah.
So we still need that information back from them as well.
We will need to get, will you be able to get that to Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can probably have an answer on that fairly quickly.
Okay. And what I would like to do, which is a little bit out of order, there was a young lady in the audience that wanted to say something earlier. You still want to speak?
Yeah.
I'm going to give her a moment to come up and speak, and then I'll let you rebut if there's, if need be. So I'm going to open it up to the public. And name again and address, please.
Marian McGoldrick, 1921 Vesper Street.
Thank you.
What is the actual square footage of the two buildings put together? What was the square, square footage in that?
Mm-hmm.
And what is the square, the total square footage in the new building?
Right.
I haven't heard those numbers at all tonight.
And that was one thing we didn't get from Mr. Fisher, and he's going to get us. Right now, I can give, we can give it on a percentage of the overall lot footage?
No, I mean, of the building itself, the living space.
Correct.
What is the square feet? Like a 10 by 10 room is 1,000 square feet. What is the square footage for this new building?
I think the architect, when he was speaking to us, said it was almost double.
That, that was the volume, I believe. The square footage, you talking usable space?
Talking total living area, square footage?
Square footage of living space.
Or just a plan view?
Going.
It seems like the living area would be about doubled, is that?
Yeah, I think that's, that sounds right, especially since it's two-and-a-half stories.
It has to be a number. I mean, every time you build a house, it's either 3,000 square feet, we just heard the people before us, 3,500 square feet, 4,000 square feet. What is the square footage of the new building?
That's part of the information we're asking from the, the people that are doing the design, and we should get, hopefully get that on the next plan.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've got it here.
As I say.
This is for the building only.
Okay.
This is not the non-vegetated surface.
Yeah.
It's hard to make out, but if I'm reading it correctly, the existing building coverage he's got at 1,740 square feet, and the new proposed building coverage is 1,737.75 square feet. Does that sound right?
Sounds right, because that's including exterior decks, the new building has more exterior decks, two cottages.
Right.
It's a little deceiving in the square footage, but yes, it's less than the two combined.
Is that just the first floor?
That's a plan view, right?
Okay, the second floor is where it doubles.
Okay. So it's going to be in the range of, right now they're saying 1,700, it's going to be probably 3,500 square feet of usable space.
That's the number I was looking for.
Yeah.
Once you pull off the decks.
Because that includes the second unit, too.
Right.
Yeah, 30 for 3,500 total.
Second unit's about 1,000.
Okay, so that's a, that's a ballpark?
Yeah, that's the number I was looking for.
Okay.
Rather impressive.
All right. Thank you. So I'm going to close the public meeting again. Gentlemen, any more questions or comments? And, Mr. Fisher, do you believe you have enough information to go from here and have useful, useful time to spend with the town and get something done?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to comment before Mr. Fisher leaves, I know these, these two appeals aren't tied together, but it seems like we sent Mr. Wilson off with a different feeling of coming back with something completely in the building envelope because of one of the criteria that wasn't met, the reasonable return. And I don't think we've left Mr. Fisher with that same impression, because I don't see any difference in the two appeals in terms of what's a reasonable return. I have a different trade between the two, and.
Right.
I think we're giving Mr. Fisher the feeling that he's okay with that, he just needs to go back and shrink the building down, whereas Mr. Watson left, and that wasn't the opinion we gave him, we gave him the opinion that he had to be within the building envelope or marry lots and all that, and that's, that's where I, that's where I'm a bit confused.
The reason I'm not pushing on the reasonable return from the previous case is because the building that he's putting up is so small.
Yeah.
It, from a reasonable return standpoint, he's not trying to maximize his profitability. He's putting a building structure on there that he can get storage and have somebody live in, and he, we just want to get him into the envelope so that he's within compliance. And here, I think they're trying to keep the same envelope, right, the same square footage from a plan view, but now they've gone up so much, to me, it's gotten really big. That, that's, again, that's my opinion.
Yeah, because the envelope's pretty similar to what, when you were overlapping those buildings, I think you actually came down on the buildable envelope.
But I don't see, just my opinion, I don't see how, if Mr. Watson came in with a three-story structure, how that differs from a one-story structure, meeting the criteria of a reasonable return.
Right.
That's where I'm confused. Does that make, you know, I mean, just because they've come in here and requested a much bigger, doesn't seem like at, at the crux of it all, it's still the same question.
It, it is, but I'm kind of approaching it in a different fashion, I guess. It is, but I'm kind of approaching it in a different fashion, I guess, from my opinion.
And I'm not arguing, I'm just, just, just my own mind, because I know we're going to see Mr. Fisher again, and probably going to see Mr. Watson again, my guess. And I, yeah, just as a board, I think we should try to be consistent. It's important.
I think we were.
Am I missing?
We have been, because we've been trying to keep it within that building envelope, and he wasn't really close to the building envelope. They were actually under the building envelope, so that's why.
No, no, the building, the building envelope is, is the actual dimension of what meets the setbacks. That's the building envelope. Am I correct, Brian, by saying that the building envelope is?
There is no building envelope, first of all.
Okay.
No real building envelope.
Oh yeah, there's a 20-foot, there's a 20-foot wide building.
Okay.
The difference between the two appeals was, there is a much bigger buildable envelope on the Proust Neck property, on the Winslow Homer Road, than there is here. And another distinct difference is, the same owner owned three parcels there. So the whole reasonable return question has a completely different complexion, in my mind, than it does for somebody who bought a single-family dwelling lot, doesn't own property on either side, and they bought the dwelling lot for the purpose, based on zoning board's instruction, that two dwellings could be made into one, and then, and they could probably approve it.
That changes that criteria, so if Mr. Zilka sells that property to whoever, if he sells that property, then the criteria changes because the ownership changes?
It could.
Okay.
It changes the complexion of the, of the ask in that regard.
I'm just asking these questions, because I, to me, I got to make sense.
Because somebody else isn't going to buy that lot just to have fair ground.
And it's fair to ask clarification, because it's an educational process here, so.
And part of the question, too, what did differ in the, in the question was the reasonable return in Mr. Watson's case, and I had more sympathy for that, because view, view's very important, because the town taxes you very heavily for that view. They pay pretty pain to be down there, so my thought is, it is a reasonable request. I know, because the topography of the lot, it's very unique, that's, that's what I think is.
If I may, I don't think view is part of the assessed value. It's the location, which has a view, but it's not the view itself, I think, to be clear.
It, it, it is the view. It is the view. It's everything, if the house has no view or has a view, the dollar amount changes dramatically.
I'm not the assessor, so I probably shouldn't say that, but I don't believe.
Well, I know they do it in rings, but the rings are in direct relation to a view. So if you were to ask a broker, I have a house with a view or not with a view, the price is going to be very different, very different. And, and, and that is, I don't think we could argue that. So in his case, I think that the topography forces him back to maintain that view, because that is the value of the property. I know for a fact that houses inside the neck down there don't bring in what the houses on the outside of the neck bring with the views. Very dramatic difference in price.
A lot of that's.
Okay.
Anyways, but I'm just trying to wrap my hands around both of these, because they seem very similar to me, and I think that was sending Mr. Fisher off, thinking that he shrinks the house, but yet he's still way outside of his building envelope, and somehow he's met the reasonable return. He's met that criteria. That's why I can't, that's what I'm having trouble with.
And again, the question is a tough question to answer. The way it's written, the line's question cannot yield a reasonable return. What does reasonable return mean to me? What's it mean to you? It could be two totally different answers.
Okay.
And like Mr. Longstaff said, you could put a hammock out there and use it to go out and just lay it down and check out the view. That's considered by the court of law.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting at. We're saying Mr. Fisher with the assumption that if he shrinks the building, he's met that criteria that you're mentioning. Well, he could tear the buildings down and put a hammock there, and he's, that's your argument. So that's what I'm saying. We're sending him off. If he just makes it a one-and-a-half story, we're going to grant that variance, but Mr. Watson has to then put his building inside the building envelope. But we're not asking that of Mr. Fisher, and I don't see a difference in the cases. That's the, that's the problem I'm having.
Again, to me, I'm calling it a non-building lot, but 20 feet wide doesn't really give you much of a living space, because once you have a hallway, you subtract three feet off that, now you're 17 feet. And then you've got eaves, and you've got all those other things that shrink that space. So to me, 20 feet is not a very wide building envelope. So, and I think the previous case had a bigger envelope, one much more reasonable to put a building on. Because you easily got a two-car garage, that's, what, 24 feet? Something along those lines. So to me, the envelope, that four feet is huge to me.
And again, Mr. Fisher may be the beneficiary of a zoning change that Mr. Longstaff just said. So if they were to reduce that by five feet on each side, and all of a sudden your building envelope is 30 feet, which is plenty of space not to come back here.
Right. So, okay. You're good?
I am.
Gentlemen, motion?
Motion to table, appeal 23, excuse me, 2555.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. So that was the last appeal for the evening. Any comments or questions from the board before we close the meeting? Do I have a motion? Oh, we've got one from the town.
Just wanted to reiterate, on September 1st.
Ah, yes, thank you.
Tuesday, September 1st at 7:00 PM, the Higgins, at the Higgins Beach Association Clubhouse, 49 Greenwood Ave, for all those folks down in Higgins Beach, there will be an unveiling of the draft ordinance. It's still a working draft, but just to kind of check in and see if we're heading in the right direction. So I'd encourage all you folks that are from Higgins Beach, out there in TB land, to, to attend. Again, September 1st, that's a Tuesday, at 7:00 PM at the Higgins Beach Association Clubhouse, 49 Greenwood Ave. One other thing, we still have an open alternate member slot here on the zoning board of appeals. We would love to have someone apply, and if you just go to the homepage, or, excuse me, the town council page of the, of the town's website, there's an application button down there. You click application and you apply, and we'd love to have another member on the board.
The pay is excellent.
So if you, if you don't want to do it, talk to people who you think might want to do it. And encourage, and invite a friend, and I would encourage the board members to do the same. Think of somebody that you know, we really need, and tonight's a good example of that. We had just four members. If we'd have had another alternate, we would have had perhaps another member, which might have tipped the scales one way or the other for some of these applicants. So it's really important. It's important work, and thank you.
I think the scales are pretty one-sided to me.
Karen?
Brian, that draft ordinance should be on the website next week.
Good point, yes.
Just because we have it.
By the week, yeah, by the week of August 24th, you should be able to find the draft ordinance that'll be reviewed on the website, under the Higgins Beach zoning repair.
Motion to adjourn? I hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Meeting's closed. Thank you very much, people.
Thank you.